Good morning, everyone. And welcome to our annual town meeting. My name is James Kane, and I have the distinct privilege of serving as your moderator this morning. To ensure good order, tellers, please raise your hands. We ask that town meeting members, without feeling squeezed, stay on this side of the tellers in the event we have to do a count. All town meeting members should be seated in front of the tellers. Only elected members of town meetings should be on this side of the tellers unless they have sought the moderator’s permission prior to the beginning of the meeting. Please rise and join with me in reciting the pledge of allegiance to our flag as we open our meeting, and please remain standing. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisibly with liberty and justice for all. As is our tradition, please remain standing as we remember Bill Gordon. Bill passed on March 1st, 2022. Our town meeting colleagues served Precinct 2 from 1993 through 1997, and again from May 2010 until his passing. Bill also served our town with great distinction as a member of the Selco team for many years. Thank you, and please be seated. Let us get underway. Our town clerk has advised me that we have a quorum, and the 2022 annual town meeting is gavelled into session. I’ve examined the warrant and the constable’s return of service, and both are in order. I ask for your unanimous consent to dispense with the reading of the warrant and the constable’s return. Hearing no objections, it’s voted unanimously. The town meeting is also being broadcast live on Channel 30. Thanks to the efforts of the SMC crew and Mark Sarah. Thank you all for giving up a Saturday. I’d like to also just mention that as we go through town meeting this morning, we have a variety of department heads in the upper-left corner, as well as members of the Personnel Board and other boards and commissions with us this evening, in addition to those up with me. I draw your attention to Page 1 of the Blue booklet, which you all received in your package, which lays out the town meeting procedures. And I would also draw your attention to the two-page color-coded bundling outline that we will use as we work through today’s meeting. All members wishing to speak are asked to raise their card or hand and address any questions or comments through the moderator. Please identify yourself and your precinct that you represent. Two standing mics are made available toward the bottom of each row, and a roaming mic or two will also be available in the event you’re not near one. It’s my pleasure now to introduce those seated to my right. Town Clerk Sharon Thomas, Town Council Stephen Madouse, Assistant Town Manager for Finance — whoops, they sat differently than at the pre-town meeting — Assistant Town Manager for Community Development and Human Services Kristen Lass, and then Mary Thompson, Assistant Town Manager for Finance and Operation. We have our Finance Committee with us today, which is chaired by Mark Adler, and I will ask him to introduce his members.
Thank you. The members of the Finance Committee—
Turn your mic on, Mark.
Thank you. The members of the Finance Committee are, from my right, Judy Vedder, Vikram Chabra, Carlos Garcia, Rajiv Dal, Dennis O’Connell, and Donna O’Connor.
And everyone at the time—
Thank you.
To my left, I have Town Manager Kevin Mars—Kevin Mars, oh my goodness. Kevin Mizikar, I’m new here. Kevin Mizikar, and Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Mo DiPaolo. Mo, would you please introduce your colleagues?
Yes, thank you. Beth Cassavant, Teresa Flynn, Michelle Conlin, and John Samia.
At this time, we will now move to the printed motions in your Blue booklet. Article 1, Mr. DiPaolo.
I move the printed motion under Article 1.
Second.
The printed motion has been made and seconded. Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends passage of Article 1.
Article 1 is, of course, a report on the Beale School. We would ask Ms. Fritz, Chair of that committee, to come forward and provide town meeting with a report.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good morning, town meeting members and Shrewsbury residents. My name is Sandra Fritz, and I’m the Chair of the Beale School Early Childhood Building Committee. It is my pleasure to report on the progress of this project. The Beale Building Committee Chair, Selectman John LeBeau, announced earlier this year that he did not plan to run for reelection to the Board of Selectmen. In order to ensure a smooth transition at our meeting on April 26, 2022, John resigned from the Beale Building Committee, and the committee members voted me in as Chair. By way of reminder, the Beale Building Committee was formed by special town meeting on April 13, 2016. The committee members include Vice Chair Erin Boucher, Town Manager Kevin Mizikar, Board of Selectmen Beth Cassavant, Superintendent of Schools Dr. Joseph Sawyer, Assistant Superintendent of Operations and Administration Patrick Collins, Beale Early Childhood Center Principal Chris Girardi, Department of Public Works Public Buildings Division Manager Keith Ballniger, and Former Superintendent of Buildings and Community Member Bob Cox. It is a privilege to serve on this community—excuse me—committee. Since the inception of this project, the committee has regularly convened in its planning and oversight role, and has worked closely with the project team, including Contractor Fontaine Brothers, Architect Lamro Pagano Associates, and the Owners Project Representative PMA Consulting Group. The town celebrated the opening and dedication of the new Major Howard Beale Elementary School at its new location on 214 Lake Street on September 24, 2021. Through the hard work and dedication of our project team, this new school was completed on time for the 2021-2022 school year, and well under the original budget that was approved by town meeting. The total budget project agreed upon with the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or MSBA, was $92,2159. As of April 26, 2022, the town has been billed $79,212,752, which is 86.1% of the total project budget. To date, the town has received $30,162,801 in reimbursement from the MSBA. The most recent financial report from our owners’ project manager forecasts a total final spending of approximately $80,355,706. I am extremely pleased to report that the Beale project is running $11.6 million under budget. The underage can be attributed to favorable market conditions at the time of the bid, prudent budgeting, a thorough design plan leading to very few change orders, and solid project management. The entire building committee and the entire project team are to be commended for the excellent management of this project, to complete it on schedule and keep it under budget despite many challenges, including the coronavirus pandemic. Once the new Beale School opened, the committee’s oversight and meetings consisted of approving invoices and the occasional change order. Moving forward, the committee will continue to meet as needed pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 41, Section 56. The committee has designated Mr. Mizikar, Dr. Sawyer, and me to approve all bills, drafts, orders, and payrolls. At this time, I’d also like to acknowledge Mr. LeBeau’s efforts and leadership during his last year as Chair of the Beale School Building Committee. He readily stepped into the role when asked and continued to guide the committee to fulfill the high expectations that are set for building committees in Shrewsbury. The Beale School Building Project is a very good news story for our town. It is modern, it’s environmentally friendly, and incorporates sustainable building systems. It is a cost-effective, long-term solution, and meets the district’s space needs program and educational needs of our district and our community today and in the future. Thank you again to all town meeting members and residents of the community who supported this very public project. Thank you for your attention this morning.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions for the Building Committee? Not seeing any. Have a—motion is to receive the report of the Building Committee. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Article 2, Mr. DiPaolo.
I move the printed motion under Article 2.
Second.
Printed motion has been made and seconded under Article 2. Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends a 2-0 passage of Article 2.
Ladies and gentlemen, I’ll speak to this one, given that it has to do with town meeting. Over the years, I have talked with a variety of people in town about Cushing’s versus some alternative. After speaking to my two predecessors at different times, primarily during the transition, this year I asked the Board to put on the warrant going—changing from Cushing’s, specifically mentioned in our bylaws, to Town Meeting Time. Frankly, I don’t have a dog in this fight, but I think as you look at the availability and challenges of securing a copy of Cushing’s Manual versus Town Meeting Time, I find it to be a basic tenet of any town meeting that you should be able to acquire or go to the library and easily find, the rulebook to Town Meeting. In addition to that, on the front page of Town Meeting Time is a full listing of the motions and what requires a certain vote, or a certain debate, or no debate, or what have you. So I think in the effort to ensure that anyone running for this position as town moderator can really have the ease of studying the manual—the book, the guidance, if you will, it makes a lot of sense to move to Town Meeting Time. So, having said that, I will now open it to members of town meeting. Mr. Byrne.
Mr. Moderator.
It’s coming, Kevin, it’s coming.
I can’t go if I do the wrong thing.
It’s coming, sir.
I can. Kevin Byrne.
Should—can everybody hear, Kevin?
I’m not particularly technically proficient in this. My name’s Kevin Byrne, I’m from Precinct 6. Just a little bit of history, realizing we’ve got lots of other stuff to do if I were to mention everything than this. When Jim King sent out a letter back in April saying, “This is probably a good idea that we change from Cushing’s Manual to something called Town Meeting Time,” and he finished the letter by saying, “I don’t know of any other existing copy of it except the one in my briefcase.” What I can tell you just historically is, when I became moderator—when I was elected moderator in 1974—Mr. Moderator, that’s 1974.
Thank you for the clarification.
Not 1874, okay? I was elected in 1974. Gerald Ford was president. Many of you—some of you probably don’t remember that Gerald Ford was president. In any event, when I got the job, John Dunn, who had been the moderator before me, said, “Here, I’m going to give you all the papers and records that I’ve accumulated over the years,” and he did. And in it—in those papers was a little brown book that was pretty beat up in 1974. It was a little dog-eared, and the rest of it—it was called Cushing’s Manual of Parliamentary Procedure, which I really had never heard about at that point, but I read it, and I followed it and the rest of it. When I decided not to run for reelection in 2009, Barack Obama was president, and my successor, Chris Mayner, got that whole package, including that copy of Cushing’s Manual, that was even more beat up after 35 years of my having carried it around. And then, when Chris decided not to run for reelection, and Mr. King took over, he got that same copy, okay? Town Meeting Time was put together by an organization called the Massachusetts Moderators Association. Everybody has an organization, and that’s one. It was put together in the 60s. It’s been updated. Last one, if I remember correctly, came out in 2001. It changes absolutely nothing with any of the processes of parliamentary law that we use in this community. It just spells it out in language that’s perhaps less British and more American than Cushing’s Manual, and I heartily recommend that we go to this. I had suggested this over the years, that perhaps we should, you know, just use Town Meeting Time rather than the old Cushing’s, and nobody really thought terribly much about it, and it never got done. This is the appropriate time to do it. Thank you.
Mr. Byrne, further comments or questions with respect to Article 2? Mr. Molina.
Jason Molina, Precinct 1. I do want to just make a testimony that I agree with how hard it is to get the book. So this is the second copy available ever in the Old New England.
Sure you got the right volume?
It took me about a year to get this book. This is the Cushing’s Manual.
Sure you got the right volume, though?
Probably not.
Ah, there you go, buddy.
1947 edition. Whereas this book—and I know you’ve made it available for your personal finances to make Town Meeting Time available in Shrewsbury Library, but this one I borrowed—sorry, North Borough—I got it from you guys. So it is much easier to get, and I’ve made a study of it, and I really appreciate your making this change. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Further comments or questions with respect to Article—this is Chris Mayner’s first time speaking from a place other than this podium. Good morning.
Good morning. Chris Mayner, Precinct 6. I just want to add my support, Mr. Moderator, to the adoption of Article 2, and mention briefly that during the 12 years that I had the privilege of serving as town moderator, I was a big fan of Town Meeting Time and a proponent of changing our procedural rules to Town Meeting Time. However, I, rather than make the—in take the initiative myself, as Mr. Kane has so wisely done this year, what I did was purchase a bunch of copies of Town Meeting Time from the Mass Moderators Association, hand them out to several people around town. Some of you may remember getting a copy from me, and was hoping, frankly, that there would be somewhat of a groundswell of support among town meeting members to make this change. I wanted to add that, in addition to the fact that this book is written in very plain English—it’s written by Massachusetts moderators—and I, during my 12 years, I also had the privilege of getting fairly actively involved in the Mass Moderators Association, so I met several of the people who are still working to keep this book updated and to answer questions from moderators all over Massachusetts about procedural issues. And I became a big fan of the book. This book is written by moderators. It addresses issues directly about town meeting procedure, about Massachusetts town meeting procedure. It gives excellent examples about procedural issues, and where there is any doubt at all about the procedures to be used, the book discusses the reasons why certain procedures and rules are adopted. It also cites to virtually all of the Massachusetts appellate court decisions relating to town meeting and town meeting procedure. So for those of you who really are procedural—town meeting procedure wonks, you would really enjoy reading this book, and if you have questions, you can almost always find the answer in this book. Although I’m retired from the job, I still sleep with this copy near me every night. So thank you, Mr. Moderator, for bringing this issue to our attention this year, and I support its passage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayner. Further comments or questions with reference to Article 2? Not seeing any. Motions have been made. All those in favor of Article 2 shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. I now draw your attention not only to Article 3, but to your bundling page. Here’s what we will now do, is stroll through the balance of the warrants. Color-coded will indicate the bundle and the article referenced. So we will start with Bundle 3, which covers Articles 3 and 4. Mr. DiPaolo will move Article 3 and 4. No doubt there’ll be a second. The Chair of the Finance Committee, Mr. Adler, will then report on the Finance Committee’s recommendations for 3 and 4. And this year, to ensure everyone, whether they’re in the hall or they’re at home, gets a crisp understanding of each article, the manager, under the Byrne Rule, as it will be noted, will provide such a crisp, complete answer. So, Mr. DiPaolo, Bundle 3, please. Articles 3 and 4. I move the printed motions under Article 3 and 4.
Second.
Mr. Adler, Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends 8 to 0, defeat of Articles 3 and 4.
Mr. Mizikar.
Good evening, town meeting members. It’s a pleasure to be with you. Articles 3 and 4, which are requested to be defeated, would have provided the town the opportunity to make payments of a prior fiscal year or adjust the current fiscal year budget. However, no such changes are needed, and therefore the motions are requested to be defeated.
Clear to everybody? We are asking that you defeat Articles 3 and 4 contained within Bundle 3. On Articles 3 and 4, Bundle 3, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
There we go. All right, 3 and 4 are defeated. Okay, now we will move to Bundle 4, which is Article 5. Article 5 stands on its own because of the nature of what it represents, our operating budget for the coming year. Mr. DiPaolo.
I move the printed motions under Articles 6, 7, and 8.
No, Mo, don’t jump over 5, buddy.
Oh, sorry.
That’s okay.
You know, I’m so excited about getting out early. I’m sorry. I move the printed motion under Article 5.
Second.
Printed motion under Article 5 has been made and seconded. Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends a 2-0 passage of Article 5.
Mr. Mizikar.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This article sets forth a proposed spending plan for July 1, 2022, through June 30, 2023. The proposed budget of $138,433,515 funds all nonutility aspects of the local government. This is separated out into Education of $79,318,971, Municipal $30,492,583, Shared Operating Support of $16,163,938, and Debt Service of $12,458,023. In accordance with the Massachusetts General Laws, this is a balanced budget and with sufficient sources of funds to cover the proposed expenditures. 99.7% of the revenue used to fund the operating budget is from recurring revenue sources. Municipal operating expenses, net of revenue from utilities, are increasing 4%, and shared operating expenses are increasing 6.23%, both in accordance with the Board of Selectmen’s override commitments. Municipal operations generally provide resources to meet the demands of this community of more than 38,000 residents. There are three additional police officers, three additional nonutility full-time equivalents within the Department of Public Works, and one additional employee in the reestablished standalone recreation department. Pages 10 through 25 of your town meeting book contain the operating budget details. They are arranged by department and broken out by salaries and wages, and general expenses, and in some other cases, specified areas. Salaries and wages are detailed in three lines. Salaries 1 include department head and assistant department head level positions. Salaries 2 include administrative positions. Salaries 3 include professional and technical positions. Expense line items are separated into fairly self-explanatory subcategories. Town meeting establishes municipal department budgets on a bottom-line basis for salaries and wages, expenses, and separate appropriations. Debt service is voted at the individual line item on a project-by-project basis for principal and interest. The school department is voted as a single bottom-line budget item. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. As has been our tradition, within the Blue Book, we will now start a slow walk through. Page 8, within Article 5. If there are any comments or questions, please raise your hands. Page 9. We now start Page 10. Personnel Board. Selectmen. Town Manager. Comments or questions with regard to Page 10? Not seeing any. By the way, if you come up with one, just raise your hand, we can always go back. Page 11, Human Resources. Finance Committee. We have a question. Yes, Sarah?
Hi.
Oh, sure, come to that, or the traveling mic, depending on what you want to do. We have a question on Page 11. Human Resources, Finance Committee Accountant.
Robert Cray, Precinct 2. I’m seeing here that, if my math is right, in five years, the town will be 300 years old. So we’ve made it 295 years without a Human Resources department. And I’m just asking whether we could make it another 295 years, or if someone explained the basis for this important need at this time.
Certainly. Mr. Mizikar.
Thank you, thank you for the question. I do not see the ability to go another day without a Human Resources department. We are an organization of over 250 employees on the municipal side alone, and we are charged with upholding everything from federal law and other employment obligations, managing leave, recruiting and attaining employees, and managing performance thereof to meet the residents’ service needs and requirements. Human resources is an essential function. I honestly think it should have been in place for 20 years at this point.
Further comments or questions with regard to Page 11 of Article 5? Not seeing any. We’ll go to Page 12 of Article 5. Assessors. Treasurer-collector. Town Council. Page 12. Any comments or questions with regard to Page 12? Page 13 of Article 5. The Town Clerk. Election and Registration and Conservation Commission. Page 13. Not seeing anyone. We’re on Page 14 of Article 5. Planning and Economic Development. Planning Board. Board of Appeals. Page 14. We’ll now move to Page 15. Public Buildings. Police Department. Fire Department. Comments or questions with respect—yes, we have a question. Please, they’ll bring a microphone to you if need be. Good morning.
Good morning. I’m Sanam Zahir. This question is for—
Your precinct, please.
Precinct 7. This question is for Mr. Mizikar. We had met with you and Chief Anderson about a year ago, and you had mentioned wanting to hire an extra social worker for the police department. I was curious why, instead of a social worker, three extra police officers were brought on board.
Mr. Mizikar.
Thank you. So the social worker has—is actually on board. It was first funded in this current year’s budget, and that person actually started the middle of April. So they are actually now working a shift each and every weekday from 1:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. to support our police department and community through those—when those needs are present.
Thank you.
Further comments or questions regarding Page 15? Public Buildings, Police Department, or Fire Department? Not seeing any. I will note at this time that our own fire chief, Chief Vona, was recently elected by his peers to be the chief of chiefs of the chief association. So congratulations, chief. We’ll now move to Page 16 of Article 5. Building Inspector. Waits and Measures Emergency Management. Comments or questions? Page 16. Not seeing any. We’ll move to Page 17. Oh, I’m sorry. Did I miss—yes, I’m sorry, please. Page 16. Building Inspector Waits and Measures Emergency Management. Please. No, they’ll bring you a mic.
Deena Nichols, Precinct 7. This is a general question, but trying to understand, what’s the process—it’s a general information question for town manager. What is the general process for adding new staff? Being that labor costs are the largest expense of most budgets, just—and I might miss some things throughout the year. I try to catch the Finance Committee meetings, et cetera. things throughout the year, I try to catch the Finance Committee meetings, et cetera. But how does that process work when a determination is made, if you decide, or if the departments decide we need more staff? What is the process that the town goes through to get the approval of those positions and have them added into the budget?
Thank you. Mr. Mizikar.
Thank you. So there's really two different paths that I think you could take. So departments all have five-year staffing plans where they're looking out over the horizon and trying to anticipate the residents' need, and which will be further informed through our strategic planning process. Where the paths diverge is whether or not we have a position already classified in our classification and compensation plan. So assuming a title is already classified, like administrative assistant, departments are required to demonstrate their need to myself and then in front of the Finance Committee for those additional staff, identifying what they are going to do and what the goals for the position are. If a title didn't already exist in our classification system, that process would first start by creating a job description, which would be reviewed and analyzed by the Human Resources team, scored and proposed to be classified within our system. It would then go to the Personnel Board. They would review it and classify it. So the Personnel Board holds the classification authority for position titles. Then at that point, it would follow the same process where departments would request it through their budget with those justifications that I previously mentioned.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. Further comments or questions with regard to, I believe we were on 16, Building Inspector Waits and Measures Emergency Management? Not seeing any. Page 17, Forestry, Other Post-Employee Benefits, Pensions. Comments or questions? Moving to page 18, Public Works Administration, Town Engineer, Fleet Maintenance. Page 18 of Article five. Not seeing any. Page 19, Highway, Street Lighting, Cemeteries. Comments or questions? Not seeing any. We'll move to page 20. Parks Maintenance, Health, Council on Aging. Page 20 of Article, containing Article five. Not seeing any. Page, oop, did I see someone? I'm sorry. Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry. Please.
Fran Manella, Precinct three. Is the Parks Maintenance salaries and expenses, this is all like appeared this time, where did that appear from?
Mr. Mizikar.
So Parks Maintenance is a new depart, or excuse me, aspect of our budget this year, but those operations were already continuing. So what we're actually doing between Parks Maintenance and Parks and Recreation is just segmenting out two different types of activities. One is the physical maintenance of our parks and related facilities, which is within Parks Maintenance, which will be part of the, is part of the Department of Public Works. Parks and Recreation are those activities and services and programs that we provide, you know, for individuals of all ages within the community. So the activity versus maintaining our physical infrastructure is the difference between those two. So we're separating it out as Parks and Recreation primarily moves out of the Department of Public Works and becomes its own standalone department.
Gentlemen, right after you, sir, right behind there. I know his son's name, I forget his name. No, just one second, sir. No, no, you go ahead, that's who I called on. I apologize, I'm blanking, I don't want to call your son's name up.
Mark Willingham, Precinct nine. I'm sorry, I got to go back a page. I'm curious, and other post-employee benefits, it's essentially tripling over the next few years from the current cost. Can you explain what that is and why there's dramatic growth?
The question is on page 17, 310, Other Post-Employment Benefits, OPEB. Mr. Mizikar.
So, thank you for the question. So other post-employment benefits are the town's responsibility and contribution to retirees' health insurance. That's the driver on those costs. So the town picks up on a normal basis 50% of the cost of retirees' health insurance, and it's funded through other post-employment benefits. It is going up, as the long-term plan was, once our pension system was fully funded and there was no longer any unfunded liability, that we'd begin to put additional funding into other post-employment benefits. Other post-employment benefits must be carried on our balance sheets, and it's an unfunded liability that we're responsible for identifying. So you will see in the 311 budget pensions below it. Pension is decreasing just as significantly. So basically, what we're doing is shifting away from extra funding into the pension system to begin funding our OPEB obligations.
Can I grab one more question?
Yes.
On the next page, street lighting, is actually falling, which is a little bit of a surprise to me. Can you explain, are we finishing some program?
Yeah, so street.
We are on page 19, 424, Street Lighting. Mr. Mizikar.
Thank you. So street lighting is declining as we are satisfying our capital requirements in the changeover to LED. So it was a multi-year plan, and now this is just getting to fund the cost of the electricity itself.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sir? We're on page 20, transitioning to 21. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, myself, Pankaj Adavil, Precinct nine. I have a question regarding the park maintenance during doing this budget things. Did we consider about the new park for the shoe players? And the second part of the question, since we are increasing the dogs, kind of, means animals lovers are increasing numbers. So do we have any plan for the dog's parts?
Very well, thank you, sir. Mr. Mizikar.
Thank you. So there wouldn't be any funding for the additional park within this. I assume that you're referencing the small park that would be at 1 through 7 Maple Avenue. There's no additional funding at this time, as that, you know, would be a multi-year project, and I wouldn't envision needing to do any maintenance there, at least until fiscal year 24, the following year. But it will be funded whenever it's required. Regarding a dog park, no, there's no plans for that at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. Further comments or questions? We'll just double-check page 20 at 4630.
Yeah, my name is Anan Sharma, I'm Precinct nine. Question regarding page 14, Planning and Economic Development.
What page are you on, sir?
Page 14.
Just so we're clear, you're on page 14. And what is the section you're asking?
Yeah, 174, Planning and Economic Development.
Planning and Economic Development, 174, on page 14. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just want to know like what kind of economic and development is going, because it's continuously increasing from 30,000 to like one or two.
Thank you. Mr. Mizikar.
The primary change, there's two different changes that you're seeing here in the salaries line item. At the fall town meeting this past October, Town Meeting authorized the establishment of the second assistant town planner position. So we now have a director of planning and economic development and two assistant town planners. So in October, we only funded part of the year, which is reflected in that line item. Additionally, we've made a change in how we're financing planning and economic development. In previous years, we've used revenue that came in from Planning Board to cover part of the salaries. It was actually for inspection services, which was not really, we weren't spending it really within the confines of, as we should have been, and performing inspections once projects are approved. So the tax levy is now picking up appropriately all the ongoing salary and wage costs for the planning department. And those dollars that used to be used there were shifted to the engineering division and covering inspectors' costs, our engineering inspectors' costs, who actually go out in the field and perform the inspections. So there's an equal decrease within the engineering division, as we'll be using those planning board fees for inspection services to cover those costs in the field.
Thank you.
Certainly, sir. Further comments or questions? Page 20, transitioning to 21. Veteran Services, Commission on Disabilities, Library. Have any comments or questions? We'll now move to page 22. Parks Recreation, Debt. Page 22, Article five. Not seeing any comments or questions. I have a question in the middle of the room. Yes.
Hello. Jennifer Partial, Precinct 10. You had indicated, this is a multi-page question, 650 and 630, which is the new Parks Division and the Parks and Rec. I was wondering, it looks like that total budget for 23 should be similar to the previous budget in 22, but it's an increase of about 200,000. Can you explain the difference?
Mr. Mizikar.
Sure. A couple of things are happening there. So in salaries line item one, you will see over a roughly $55,000 increase. As the department head that was superintendent of public facilities, salary used to be split between two different line items, Parks and Recreation and Public Buildings. So Parks and Recreation is covering the full department head costs. We are increasing administrative, a dedicated administrative assistant and placing it with Parks and Recreation, which you see in salaries line item two. Those are two significant drivers. And then there are additional costs that are also found within the Parks Maintenance budget, where we're increasing funding within the salaries three line item to provide for more, excuse me, workers, laborers in the field to manage and maintain our parks, both mainly on a part-time basis. So those are part-time seasonal employees.
Further comments or questions? Page 22. Now moving to page 23, which is again the total of long-term debt, long-term debt and interest, and the short-term debt in total. We have a question down front. Yes, good morning. Mark, we need a mic. Just one second, it's on the way to you.
Roberta Goldman, Precinct eight. When we're talking about debt, could you just explain further about the debt that the Beal Early Childhood Center has? I mean, I just need to know the mechanics of the amount, and also the police station as well. I noticed in 2023 that the debt, of course, is lower because we've paid off something, I'm assuming, but I don't know. So, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Mizikar.
Yep. So I'll try to state what's at least in my head on mechanics, and happy to answer a follow-up question, but generally speaking, the town issues level principal, which is declining debt service. So unlike a mortgage where you pay the same amount every month for 30 years, we as a town pay the same amount of principal each year and retire our debt a lot faster than a traditional mortgage or a level debt service payment would require. So with regards to the police station, you are seeing a little bit of change in year-to-year over the principal, just reflecting the debt structure. And then you'll see, you're seeing a decline, of course, more notably in the interest area, which I just talked about, and you'll continue to see that decline year over year. These are both 20-year terms, and the Beal Early Childhood Center is the debt that's associated with the new school at 214 Lake Street. Both of them are, have interest rates in the 2% range, and will be retired again at the end of the 20-year term.
Further comments or questions with respect to 22 as it flows to 23? Yes, sir. A mic is on the way. Or you can be on the way, whichever you'd prefer. Good morning.
Good morning. Andrew Nelson, Precinct two. I have a question about the Selco fiber-to-home debt. Is the revenue for that coming from the Selco rates or the general fund taxation?
Mr. Mizikar.
It is coming from the Selco rates. You can reference that on page nine. It's a part of the except-from-Selco revenue source that has been offered for appropriation.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further questions on 22 or 23? Good morning, Bernie.
Bernie Floretta, Precinct one. I have a question concerning costs, labor costs specifically. During the last town meeting we had, we approved an additional holiday, which was to take place in June, and that was approved. The question was raised was how much, how much does it cost for that single holiday? The answer given was it's in the budget. Well, that was an answer, but that was not the answer to the question. How much does a single holiday cost? In the private sector, normally this would be considered productive hours. As any lawyer or consultant would know, this would be considered billable hours for the work performed. The question again is, how many hours and dollars would be paid or expended for a single holiday? Can we have that answer to that question?
Sure. Mr. Mizikar.
I don't have a specific dollar amount for you. I don't recall saying that it was in the budget, but perhaps you remember better than I. So it is a holiday for municipal employees that are paid. We don't bill on an hourly basis or generate revenue as you suggest, but it is, it is a part of the 200-plus working hours, and it's, it's contained within, within these line items, but I cannot calculate in front of you right now the specific cost of a single day. I'd be happy to provide that after the meeting, within, you know, a week or so, but I don't have it in front of me.
A follow-up, Mr. Floretta?
Just a follow-up comment. That is a decline in productivity when, when the holiday is given, and so there is a loss of services to the town through their taxes. So it would be interesting to know what that cost is. Would it be possible to get that as a blast email to all town meeting members, the hours and dollars that are transferred, say, from productive hours to paid time-off hours?
Mr. Mizikar.
Sure. We'd be happy to.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you.
Certainly an opportunity cost.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments or questions? Page 22 flowing into 23. Okay, not seeing any. That finishes up the municipal side of our operating. Oh, I'm sorry, there is one more. And why can't I see that person? No, good morning. No, thank you for standing up, thank you.
I also wanted to know the amount of money that it might cost to give a holiday, but I also want to acknowledge all the hard work that municipal workers do year-round in our town to make it such a wonderful place to live, and that giving them a day off, we should be happy to do that in gratitude for all of the work that they do year-round in town.
Thank you very much. Further comments or questions with respect to Article 22? Far on my right.
Sure, identify yourself, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, that's a good point. Ma'am, would you please identify yourself in the precinct you represent?
My name is Bridget Hilton, and I'm Precinct seven.
Thank you very much. So there's someone who would like, yes.
Lisa Pajian, Precinct three. In number 751, interest, just curious about, all of the numbers seem to be going down except for Sherwood Middle School. Could you just clarify why that is?
751 interest. Go ahead, Mr. Mizikar.
Sure.
Page 23 for those following.
Page 23, thank you.
In April of 2001, we refinanced the Sherwood Middle School project. So this is the start of revised final 10-year schedule for that. When we refinanced that, we took it from over 4% interest down to three-quarters of 1%. But in the first year of the term, since it's level principal, it's higher than the previous year, but that refinancing alone will save the taxpayers over $2 million.
Further comments or questions regarding those final pages of the municipal side, 22 and 23? Where? Oh, yes. Good morning, Mo.
Mo, Precinct
Mo, Precinct 1. As we're wrapping this up, I just want to congratulate the Beal Building Committee because they've reduced our debt by $11 million, and we should recognize that. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Mo. Further comments or questions, 22, 23, or we will now move to the School Department. I will ask Chair Lindsay Heffernan and the superintendent, who I saw earlier but can't find right now. There he is. Good morning, Mr. Superintendent. Lindsay, if you'd care to introduce your colleagues who are with you this morning?
Absolutely. Good morning. My name is Lindsay Heffernan. I'm the chair of the Shrewsbury School Committee, and with me this morning are all the other school committee members, Vice Chair Jason Pallage, Secretary John Wensky, School Committee Members Sandy Fritz, and our newest school committee member, Erin Boucher. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, for the time this morning. We have much to be thankful for in our school department. I want to thank all of these town meeting members for supporting us over the many years, and certainly the Board of Selectmen and Mr. Mizikar for a unique and critical override agreement and our wonderful working relationship. I want to also thank the voters for the override. The members of our school administration, Dr. Sawyer and team, who have worked so hard over the last two and a half years to educate the children in our schools and to keep our schools open and safe. And I want to also thank our excellent staff who have worked through the pandemic to ensure that every child has the chance to learn in an environment with supportive adults. Most importantly, I am thankful for the position we are in to create a budget totaling $79.3 million for fiscal year '23, which accomplishes three important things. First, it is fiscally sound. It stays within the override framework, which caps growth for the school committee budget at, excuse me, for the school department budget this year at 4.75%. In particular, I would like to note that just this week, we have completed a new three-year contract with the Shrewsbury Education Association, our largest union, which allows for cost-of-living increases over a three-year term at 3%, 2.25%, and 2.25% over the next three fiscal years, and increases longevity benefits beginning in the second year. This contract demonstrates a solid and respectful working relationship with the Shrewsbury Educational Association and the school committee. Two years ago, pre-override, we were at a historic moment for our schools, and our faculty took nearly a $1 million pay cut in order to, excuse me, deferring raises for a half of a year, and that cut allowed us to keep jobs. This new contract recognizes that sacrifice while staying within the parameters of our budget. We continue to be impressed and thankful for their dedication to our children. Secondly, this budget begins to build back where we have cut, including staffing in special education at the preschool, elementary, and high school level, adding for English-language learners at the elementary level, investing in three additional positions in the allied arts at the middle school level. We know that as a school committee and an entire community, we have made some historic cuts to programming over the past many years. With this in mind, we will continue to look to invest funds wisely to support needed services for our students today. Third, this budget makes smart strategic investments in areas of mental health, technology, and curriculum. Most notably, we are making significant investments to bring on additional capacity to respond to and address the growing mental health crisis in our youth today. These positions include three adjustment counselors at the middle school and high school level, two clinical coordinators to support cases with significant behavioral impacts, director of clinical counseling and mental health services to coordinate this work across the district, along with a social worker, and we are assuming permanent funding for the role of a district-wide mindfulness director, which was previously grant-funded. The school committee will, of course, be tracking the outcomes of this infusion of investments in order to ensure that we are continuing to make meaningful impacts in the lives of our young people. While we are achieving those three goals, I want to also note that for the first time in recent history, we are removing a school committee-created fee for the participation of activities at the middle school and high school level. At the school committee, we know that we are amongst school districts with the highest rate of fees for our parents and families, and we accounting for over $1 million of our expenses. This fee, which impacts nearly half of all of our students, is another barrier to participation in the rich variety of programs offered as part of our academic curriculum. I hope that we will be able to make more progress in that area along these lines in the future. So while I am very thankful for the position that we are in today financially with a strong school system, which makes smart, fiscally prudent decisions, and consistently delivers on the high-quality educational value to our students, our families, and our taxpayers, continuing also, I would note, to be well, well below the state average in pure pupil expenditures. There are some disturbing events happening in education, which I want to spend a few moments to highlight for all of you. We have prepared a budget, as I mentioned, with additional investments, pound on page four of your school committee budget book, to respond to the mental health needs of our young people. These past 26 months have been like nothing us adults have ever experienced, and the children, while oftentimes highly resilient, frankly, are not all right. Alarmingly, as a community, just this past December, in an anonymous survey, 17% of our high school students admit that they have seriously considered suicide in the last 12 months, and 14.6% of our 7th and 8th graders would admit to the same. Our educators and administrators tell us stories of children who at times are highly dysregulated, suffering from extreme depression and anxiety, and often frankly, in complete mental health crises. This is not an environment ripe for learning. Clearly, the mental health and educational needs come before we can begin the work of reading, writing, and arithmetic. Our dedicated staff, which comprise 84% of the school department budget, are spending an incredible amount of time and attention on the needs of these youth. To help address this growing time commitment before you as a budget, making thoughtful investments of new staffing to address some of these challenges. These resources will help ensure that our kids have the trained support that they need while allowing our administrators and educators to focus on the job of education. I would also like to note, a matter that's impacting many of our students and families, that technical and vocational high schools are also in desperate need across this state. Yet, due to a change in admission policies at the state level, currently, Shrewsbury 8th graders who ordinarily would have been admitted to Assavet Valley Technical High School and would have seen as a line item on tuitions for our district will no longer be able to enroll. Technical high school experiences are unique and wonderful programs for the children who attend. However, I want to note for all of you, that is not a model that we can easily replicate at the high school that we have today. We continue to advocate at the state level to address this admission policy, which has locked many, many communities just like ours out of seats in technical programs, while trying to be creative about building and providing exposure to real-world scenarios for our high school students within the four walls of our buildings. Notwithstanding these challenges, I am incredibly confident in our school system, ably led by Dr. Sawyer and his team of professionals. Our schools continue to graduate students who are critical thinkers and are prepared for the challenges of this complex world. This upcoming year, we will be proactively going through a strategic planning process to thoughtfully assess where we are today and where we need to be in the future. This needs and gap assessment will help us as a school committee to ensure that we are investing in the right areas moving forward. I welcome the participation of all of you in the community in that process this fall. Today, however, I believe that we are presenting a budget which keeps our schools aligned to deliver high-quality education at a very good value for our taxpayers. I ask for your affirmative vote on the budget presented in your materials, and I would welcome Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Collins to join me for any questions that the moderator might attend. Thank you.
Up to you. Well, thank you very much. I do draw the attention of town meeting members to page 24 in your blue book, which is side-by-each version as opposed to the traditional, as well as the extremely thorough package presented by the school committee and the professional staff that was provided in your town meeting book. So I will now open it to any comments and questions regarding the operating budget of the Shrewsbury Public Schools effective July 1. Any comments or questions? Yes, up in the back. Morning, Joe. Patrick, how are you?
Deb Daldado, Precinct 8. First, I'd like to thank everybody in our schools for the wonderful job that they have done over many, many years, and especially this last few years. My question is if you could just give a little bit more detail of the decreases in B2, C1, and C2? And thank you.
Absolutely. If I can welcome.
Please. School Department.
And I'm noting, for those trying to follow, I believe you're on page 27 of our book, and I'd certainly welcome Mr. Collins' support. Thank you.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Could you just repeat those categories for me? I didn't catch all of them.
Mr. Collins, Deputy Superintendent for Finance and Administration, if I recall.
B2, C1, and C2.
Okay, bingo. How's that? Okay. Special education, transportation, that's an area where, if you noticed in the special education, out-of-district enrollment, a slight dip for next fiscal year, and so we have some decreased costs for transporting students to out-of-district placements. And we can also account for that here. We use two different sources of funds, some grant funding and some town-appropriated dollars, and as a result of the enrollment dip, we can decrease our dollars for the appropriation for next year. In terms of C1, net special education tuition, that's related to what I just talked about. Those placements for high-need students that we cannot unfortunately educate in our own district, we send to private placements. And for a number of reasons, we are experiencing a decrease, which decreases our costs. We've had a number of students who might otherwise continue their education post-high school, take their certificate, and decide to graduate during kind of these COVID times. And as was referenced earlier in Ms. Heffernan's comments about vocational tuitions, that's category C2. Because of the change in the enrollment policy statewide, where we had budgeted for a decrease of students for next fiscal year, and it's really significant. So in fact, on the, I'll just point out to you, the enrollment chart for vocational enrollment, which is later in your book, and you can see the drop-off. Page 37. Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. So if you look at the top of page 37, you'll see that for fiscal year '22, and even 100 students were budgeted for all four grades, and for next fiscal year, we're down 23 students, down to 77. And on the preceding page, page 36, we actually break out that enrollment on a grade level by grade level basis, and you can see that the current senior year class at Assavet has 31 students, so they're outgoing, and incoming, we were budgeting for eight. And at this particular point, it's not even likely that we'll have eight students in that freshman class based upon the change in enrollment, but we had probably around 35 to 40 8th grade students apply for admission.
Further comments or questions with respect to the School Department budget? Mr. Campanello?
Paul Campanello, Precinct 6. I don't know if this is to Mrs. Heffernan or not. You both referenced, and I probably didn't catch it, this, is it a state mandate or a federal or a change? And I'd like maybe, you know, 201 instead of the 101 on that. Why the big change? Why the big drop? I don't know if that's for you or for Dr. Sawyer, I think.
Mr. Sawyer.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. The State Elementary and Secondary Education Board last spring voted to change the admissions policies and regulations under state law for students to access vocational technical education. And I'll preface this by saying Massachusetts has probably what is known as the best vocational technical education program in the United States. It's been in existence a long time, but particularly after the Education Reform Act of 1993, it really raised the game. Those of us who grew up prior to that may recall that there were perceptions, and sometimes realities, that students who were attending what were then known as trade schools, or maybe perceived as students who were not quite "cut out" for more academic-type high school approaches. The Education Reform Act really shifted that to indicate that not only was it important that students be able to gain the skills to be able to go straight into vocational and technical careers, but that they should also be academically proficient. And the Voc-Tech schools across the state absolutely took on that challenge, and by the time I became superintendent 13 years ago, Voc-Tech schools were incredibly in demand, and over the past 15 years or so, the number of students who want that kind of education, where students sometimes go straight into career, sometimes go to two-year schools for additional training, sometimes go to four-year schools, and top-notch ones at that, these schools offer advanced placement classes along with a very clear vocational technical track program. So it's a public policy problem for the state that there is more demand than there are seats. The way it is structured in Massachusetts is that back in, I believe, the 1960s, it might have been the early 1970s, there was an opportunity for communities to decide whether to join a vocational, technical, high school, school district. And at that time, Shrewsbury chose not to do that. Some neighboring communities, including Westboro and Northboro and Southboro, joined with Marlboro, Hudson, a couple of other communities, to form the Assavet Valley Technical Regional School District. That school district is funded directly by those municipalities for the students from those communities that it serves, as well as all of its capital costs, all of its post-retirement benefit costs, and so forth. So out of the 351 communities in Massachusetts, about 120 or so, I believe, are not members of these vocational, technical districts. And as a result, for students in those communities, like Shrewsbury, to send students to Voc-Tech schools a long time ago, to what was then known as Worcester Trade, and then over the last few decades to Assavet Valley Technical, it's done so on what's called an out-of-district tuition basis. So although Shrewsbury is not part of the Assavet District, our students could apply for seats that were available. If they were accepted, they were able, the town, through the school department budget, would pay a tuition based on their per-pupil amount, which is, this year, I think, is about $16,000 or so per student. This has been about a $2 million line item in our budget for a long time. We, unlike some communities that sort of balked at students going, we've always supported this because we feel it's a very important education. If that's the right fit for those students, it's something that we should be supporting as a town. Unfortunately, as a result of some difficulties, and not necessarily within the Assavet District, but other places in the state, communities that were part of these districts had become increasingly upset that students from districts that were not part of their regional district were getting seats that they wanted to go to students from their own community. And they lobbied the State Board of Education. The State Board of Education ultimately passed these new regulations that indicated that before any non-resident students, so in our case, before any Shrewsbury students, Assavet also has a number of students from Clinton and from Boyleson, I believe, before any of those students could be admitted, every student from the member communities must be admitted first who want that education. And as a result, they have now a bifurcated process where they have an admissions process for their member towns, for their non-member towns, and only if they fill all their seats and still have seats remaining from their member towns, would they take students from non-member towns off a waiting list. Earlier in the year, when we brought this up in December, some people asked the question, well, what would it take for Shrewsbury to join the Assavet Region School District and perhaps have more access for our students? That's a town-based decision, not a school department-based decision. If they were to explore that, they would have to approach the Assavet Valley School Committee, and they may not have any interest in having other towns join. If Shrewsbury were to join, they would also have to take part in all of the capital expenses and post-retirement expenses and so forth. It's unfortunate that essentially, an issue that was, you know, a supply and demand issue really has just been shifted from where, at the same time, I should mention this and appreciate the question again, part of the issue that this went to at state policy change is that there was a perception that students who could best benefit from these kinds of education were not getting access because there was such a high level of demand, the Voc-Tech schools were setting a very high bar for admission. So a student who may have had some maybe academic difficulties or some behavioral difficulties in middle school were not able to gate admission. or some behavioral difficulties in middle school, were not able to gate admission. So you can imagine, for example, a student in one of the member communities at Asabette, let's say Marlboro, that's their biggest community, would apply and not get in because a student from Shrewsbury had better academics and a better behavioral attendance record. And the state basically said, we shouldn't be excluding students on that fine of a degree for these kinds of educational opportunities. But because there's only so many seats, essentially, they've shifted the problem to a different kind of problem, which is communities like ours are now not getting access at all. It's a real significant issue. We have a meeting coming up with Senator Moore and Representative Kane to discuss it further. And it's something that is going to have to be addressed at the state level. And it is something that we're going to be paying attention to. And certainly, what we'll need to do as a school district over the coming years, as these students, who next year will go to Shrewsbury High School, who typically would have gone to Asabette, we cannot replicate the kind of program Asabette has. It's just not possible in the kind of high school that we have. That said, we're looking to increase the number of job shadowing opportunities, internships, hands-on kind of projects. We have done that, even because we knew students who wanted to get to Asabette who couldn't get in from Shrewsbury. We added the project Lead the Way Engineering series of classes a number of years ago. So we've taken steps, and we're going to need to take more steps to make sure that those students who are looking for a more hands-on, real-world type of education have more of those opportunities, perhaps partnering with other, you know, whether it's Consignum Community College, who we're trying to develop a partnership with. So it's a, I apologize for the long answer, but it's a very significant public policy question, and one that is going to affect how we try to provide services for our students in the coming years.
Thank you very much, Mr. Superintendent. There was a question up back prior. Yes. No, right there. Yes, you. Nope. No, it's not on.
It is not on.
Now it's on.
Now it is on. Okay. Again, I'm Stan Amzire, Precinct 7. I'm looking at the fiscal year 2023 budget request, and I'm on page 39, looking at the MCAS 2021 district results. I noticed that whenever these are publicized, especially at the elementary level, we never separate by the schools. We never show the difference between the different elementary schools. The first thing I wanted to do was to ask that, moving forward, that is broken down by elementary school, because I think that's really important, to look at that. The reason I think it's important is because if you look at the Department of Education website, you'll see that there are disparities in student performance between the schools, particularly between Spring Street Elementary and Coolidge Elementary, which respectively have the most and least number of students with free reduced lunch. And my question is, is there anything in the current but proposed budget to address some of these inequities?
Thank you. Ms. Heffernan.
Sure. And I'd welcome Dr. Sawyer, any comments that you might have on this one. I appreciate the request, and certainly it is really important that we attend to any academic discrepancies at the, at end, for any of our children, frankly. And that level of reporting and reporting detail is certainly something we can consider for the future. In terms of specific ways to address academic disparities, Dr. Sawyer, was there anything you'd like to add to that?
Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you. Appreciate the question. We have reported MCAS results in terms of our local reports by grade level, because we feel that we need to talk about our students as one community and one town. And certainly, what we don't want to do is give any perception that we are competing among our elementary schools somehow, in terms of, unfortunately, the public often likes to have played, you know, sort of horse race games around which school is doing better or not. I can assure you that the quality of our teachers, the quality of the curriculum, the quality of the educational experience that our students are receiving from our educators is equitable across our schools. And we know that test score results are highly correlated with socioeconomic status, level of education apparent, first language, or what language might be being spoken in the home. So we know that certainly across different parts of our community, and that's something that is certainly fair to acknowledge, that there are going to be discrepancies among those schools. For me, what's important is to consider that if we have a student who is going to attend any of our schools, if they're going to get the same quality education and same level of opportunity, so that when we arrive at Sherwood Middle School as a unified fifth-grade class, they're all equally well-prepared, based on where they're at and how far we've been able to move them. We do a variety of things to make sure that we're looking at where students are and their progress, and providing the interventions that we need to help bring them up and increase their performance. And of course, that's particularly important now, after the two years of the pandemic. We do have more resources at Coolidge School in certain areas. One of those is in reading tutoring and math tutoring, because we're able to use Title I funds from the federal government that are earmarked for schools that have larger numbers of students who come from lower socioeconomic status categories. And that's something we'll continue to provide. We have continued to provide some other services at a greater level. We previously had more, were able to provide this past year, more counseling services there. For example, up until the point, we were able to add some other pieces, other places, and of course, some of the issues for counseling, cut across socioeconomic lines. But in terms of data, we do link to the Department of Education data, which is on their website, which is quite detailed, school by school. It's something that we want to be sure. And I know that sometimes people ask the question about things like, we're actually, there will be reports on a per-school basis now at the state level on per-pupil expenditure, which unfortunately, I think, is somewhat of a tricky thing to do, because per-pupil expenditure is so tied to the salaries that staff get. Schools that have more veteran staff, for example, are going to have higher per-pupil expenditures than schools that may have newer teachers or newer career teachers than others. But in terms of focusing on, we have added a few other things in the last couple of years that we are very, find are going to be a very favorable opportunity, which is, how can we make sure that we're providing ongoing formative assessment and then providing, we actually made a shift so that the reading tutoring services beyond the extra Title I services that Coolidge gets are provided where the reading services are most needed. Instead of dispersing them across the district kind of on a per-pupil basis, we actually will shift resources, tutoring resources, to the schools that are demonstrating where students are maybe further behind in reading or math, or whatever the subject matter might be. So just a few thoughts, but, you know, equity of, you know, what we're providing to our students is incredibly important to us. And obviously, you know, no one is going to expect that we are going to be able to control for outside socioeconomic factors. What we can control for is making sure that we take our students where they're at and move them as far as we possibly can. And we are very proud that students from all of our elementary schools, when they get to Sherwood and then beyond, thrive and are very successful on the whole. And obviously, we're trying to get better at that every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Further comments or questions with reference to this? Right behind Roberta, Krista.
Krista Dupre, Precinct 1. On page 19, I just want to highlight of the five-year strategic goals. I really appreciate that, one, helping students develop independence after graduation, exposure to career choices, and development in skills in financial literacy. I feel this is desperately needed of all students. I can tell that firsthand. But I would also like to comment, if there could be added in the five-year strategic plan, that we also include English language learners, and also more specifics for the special education students. That was more of a comment. My second question is actually on page 27. I do see there's a listing of the positions in by groupings. But I'm really curious to know, is there a blown-up chart available of, say, sections D1, D2, A4? It just seems a bit vague to understand what administration contracted services are, or educational contracted services are. I don't know if that's available at all, or in general. I know there's a breakdown on one of the last pages in the book.
Patrick is making his way to provide you with a thorough and crisp answer.
Thank you. I'll have a follow-up if so, Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure, I'd be happy to. So in your budget book, you have, of course, a summary of the $79.3 million budget that the school committee has approved. They also reviewed, and we have posted on our website, a detailed line-item budget. And the line items are totaled probably over 1,000 different line items. So really, what you are looking at is summary information. In terms of some more specifics with respect to those particular categories, I can give you some examples. Category D1, for example, administrative contract-type services include costs for advertising, costs for participating in the E-Rate program, which is a federally-funded grant program for us to apply for reimbursement for technology resources, repairs and maintenance of vehicles, legal services. Those are all types of examples of administrative contract services. D2, you know, shifts into more educational-type services. We've got in there included, on retainer and contract, is physician services, which were obviously much needed in the past year and will be in the future year, home and hospital tutoring, and then translation services for multiplicity of foreign languages in which we need to communicate with parents. So that's some examples of educational contract services. And was there one other category? A4. So that's a salary category, where we have kind of collected, if you will, a number of different groups of staffing, including all of our clerical support, IT support, and other kind of one-off positions, if you will, that are not represented by a labor group. And for example, another person in that category would be a grants manager. So that's a collection of a large number of different folks that serve in different roles in the district.
Thank you, Patrick. One follow-up?
Yes, please. Thank you. Thank you for the explanation. On page 6, over FY '23 new investments, I still feel, even though I've been in Shrewsbury for 15 years, I'm still a short-timer here, but this is the first year, there's not a school budget deficit. First time since moving into town. That being said, I wonder how, and if it can be explained further, with these addition positions, how are these going to be sustained long-term? Absolutely, we do need these positions. I understand there needs to be backfill. But looking long-term, I'm hoping to hear the long-term plan for these positions.
Certainly. Ms. Heffernan?
Thank you.
And I would welcome also Mr. Mizikar, if it is helpful here. I think it's important for everybody to understand the work that happened about a year and a half ago between the school committee and the Board of Selectmen, to come up with our override stabilization plan. Certainly, we don't want to put positions in the budget that we can't afford and that we're in a year's time trying to get rid of, right? That is not a sustainable way to make investments. The reason these positions are here is because we believe we now have that sustainable plan. So the override agreement, sometimes we've called it the Arlington Agreement, because we modeled it after the community of Arlington, when the override was put on the budget a year ago, just exactly a year ago, there was an agreement between the Board of Selectmen and the school committee that we would also, and you all voted, to create an override stabilization fund. That fund, I think it's later on in this, today, we'll be talking about the dollars to go into that fund, ensured that we had a place, essentially, a saving spot, to make sure that we didn't have to go back to the voters to talk about creating another override and when to do that for a certain number of years. And the time we agreed it would be four, and we now think we can at least get to five before we'd hit that mark again. So we know budgets go up every year, right? That's going to happen, particularly a budget that's so heavily focused on personnel. But this agreement gives us that stability to know that these positions we can continue to fund over the coming years.
I think that was a complete and fantastic answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go over here now, against the walkway.
Hi, Danielle Wolfes, Precinct 1. I wanted to go back to the vocational-technical high schools. Just wondering, and I probably should know this answer, but I don't, have we looked into partnering with the Worcester Technical High School? And also, is there a way for us to become in district for any of these vocational-technical high schools? Or even, and I know that this is a huge thing to even mention, have our own vocational high school here in Shrewsbury? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you, Ms. Wolfes. So in terms of Worcester Technical High School, Worcester Technical High School actually has so much demand from within Worcester that they have no available, they don't have enough available seats for Worcester students, never mind students from outside. So even just informal conversations, there's really no interest or access for us at that particular school. In terms of joining another vocational-technical district, and the most natural one, of course, would be Asabette, where we've been sending kids for a couple of decades plus now, again, the town would have to approach the Asabette Valley School Committee, which is consists of representatives from each of its member communities. And they would have to entertain that they'd actually like to add another community. And they may not. They may or may not. And that's something that, you know, whether the town, certainly I could be happy to work with anyone who's interested in potentially approaching them. But in terms of, you know, part of the way that the state regs changed is that now those communities certainly have more access for their own students. And so if they bring Shrewsbury on board, Marlboro and Hudson, and Northboro, Southboro and Westboro are going to have fewer seats for their own kids. So I'm not sure there's a lot of incentive for them to have us join. As far as the cost, a comprehensive vocational-technical high school of a size, you know, the number of students from Shrewsbury, there's not really an economy of scale to build an entire high school for them, I think. In a high school, you're probably talking on the order of $200 million investment, probably. And technically, high schools are particularly expensive, of course, because not only is it a high school, but it's also all of the machinery and whatnot that the Baker-Polito administration provided a great deal of grants over the last several years, so that Voc Tech high schools could actually replace some machinery to make sure they're sort of state-of-the-art, and they're training their students on what they're going to actually see as soon as they go into the workplace. And that's the reason I say that for Shrewsbury High School, and those of you who know it was built, it had a wood shop, it had an automotive shop, it had a metal shop. And those, over the years, were, those programs went away and were cut because of the financial need for the school district for its primary academic focus. And those programs in Shrewsbury High School were always electives. They were never ones that trained students to actually be certified in their fields. So I think that we're going to have to look at partners, outside partners, and whether or not there are ways, there's an Innovations Pathways Program that the state has created that we're going to be looking at. And Dr. Lazzott, in her capacity as Assistant Superintendent for Community Partnerships, is going to be working in the coming year to see if we can identify some things that may be able to have a particular pathway for high school students that's connected to a specific profession or trade. So there's a variety of things we're looking at. We've started a partnership with Worcester State University. We're actively engaged with Consignum Community College, who have some of those school-to-work kinds of programs. So again, it's a really important piece. It's a great question, and it's something that, but some of those solutions are going to be very difficult, other than trying to think a little bit differently about how we provide those kinds of options.
If I can just add one more piece to that. Not only would we be approaching the district of Asabette Valley, we'd also be, they would have to go to all of their member districts, and each member district would have to vote, and I think it's a two-thirds vote as well. Hundred percent. Hundred percent vote. So it doesn't seem super likely that that would work out for us, for us to build our own district. In addition to the capital cost of building a building, I wanted to remind everybody, we would need more operating budget to hire all the teachers to put in the building. And so there would be some significant outlay, which is why we haven't sort of begun that process.
Thank you very much. Further comments or questions with reference to the school department's operating budget, DeDine.
DeDine Garnett, Precinct 2. Sorry not to harp on the technical school issue. As a proud graduate of this school, that we had a very vigorous technical school here. I did woodshop here. I still I still have my table in my bedroom. Thank you, Mr. Peralta. I still have my metal thing from Mr. Miller, my son, actually. The one reason he went into the Marine Corps with military intelligence, it wasn't because he wasn't smart enough to graduate here. It was because he didn't do step B and C. He wanted to go from step A to D. He didn't want to do the dioramas. He didn't want to do the projects. He's a pretty smart kid. It was thanks to Mr. Smith and all of Mr. Smith's help in the auto shop, in the wood shop, that he graduated high school. It wasn't because a kid wasn't smart enough. So we need these skills for these kids. He did graduate Shrewsbury High. He would have been better off at Assabette. But thank God that Shrewsbury had these technical shops in the schools. So we are catering to a lot of kids now, and I appreciate that we do have the programs now for a lot of the other kids. But we did away with all of these shops, and they were very instrumental. My brother, thank God my brother got out of this school alive. My God. Mr. Peralta and Mr. Miller, he haunted these teachers. But these shops were so instrumental to so many kids. And we have so many tax dollars now going to so many kids that need them. But these shops are really, really incredible in this school to so many kids. And I'm wondering if we have looked at the other communities that don't have technical schools. Westborough, you mentioned some others. Yes, we can't build our own technical school, but have we thought about collaborating with other communities? And maybe building a school with other communities that don't have their own technical school and making our own collaborative school with other technical schools? And why didn't Shrewsbury buy into the thing when we completely destroyed our own technical program here? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, I don't know that there's anyone in the room who could give an answer to your second question, given that a number of years ago, that decision was made, but we'll try on the first question.
Yeah, I wasn't alive when that decision was made, so I'm not sure. But if I had to guess, we are a community that has been largely pretty financially conservative, and it is a big expense to join and bear all the capital costs. What I want you all to know is that we, on the school committee and at the district level, completely appreciate the huge challenges this presents for us, right? That there are students who need both the deep technical abilities that Assabette Valley has, and also, to your point, that we previously had programming in our high school, as Dr. Sawyer mentioned, that was pretty expensive and hard to maintain, but also delivered a really important value for many students. I think there's a couple of things for you all to know that are places where we can be sort of infusing this thinking going forward. One, as we launch into our strategic planning process, do we want to kind of, as a community, approach other communities? Is that something you all would be even interested? We're not in a position in the middle of this fiscal year to present any proposals to you on that at this point in time, as we haven't researched it. But I think that's one thing. Another piece to know, our high school is at complete capacity. And so the idea, many of the programs that were there were taken out because we needed rooms for math and English. And so, you know, we are now looking in partnership with the town at a complete space study for all of, across all of our schools. Running a wood shop, you don't have a lot of kids in there to keep it safe, right? And it takes a lot of space. And so there's a bunch of different dimensions of this problem, that as we try to think about partnerships, that's a near-term possibility for us to do more internship programs for kids. It's not a long-term fix, and it's not going to get the depth of what you're hoping for. But it is absolutely something that we're continuing to try to think creatively about.
Thank you very much. Further comments or questions with respect? I'm looking for first-time questions. Way up back here. Is that Charlie?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Could you please identify yourself in your precinct?
Charles Garavedian, Precinct 2. On page 50 of the school's budget request, they have given us the teacher's salary and staffing chart, and that is obviously part of the contract between the teachers' union and the school committee. But that does not give us a clear picture of the actual teacher expenditure for the town of Shrewsbury. One number underneath that, in the average teacher salary comparison, gives a mean of, I think it's $87,977, which is one step in understanding our teacher salaries. Teacher salaries is a set of numbers. To totally understand the behavior of that set of numbers, I would request in future booklets that the following information be contained. Number one, give us the actual highest salary that is paid a teacher in Shrewsbury. The smallest salary paid a teacher in Shrewsbury. Give us the three quartiles. That is, more specifically, the 25th percentile salary, the 50th percentile salary, which is the median, and the 75th percentile salary. In addition to that, provide the standard deviation of all these teacher salaries. In that, we can begin to understand what the distribution of our teacher salaries look at. The second part of my request is, in going through this booklet, I don't see any mention of salaries of administrators. Therefore, respectfully request that in future additions, the salaries of administrators be contained in this booklet. If not specifically position by position, but clearly contain all of the characteristics that I just listed for the teachers. What is the highest administrative salary? What is the lowest? What is the mean? What are the three quartiles? What is the standard deviation? In that way, I think the people here and the people in the town can better understand the salaries that we have to pay to run our school department, and that also adds to our understanding of the total school department budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Further comments or questions? I'd like to get in those who have yet to ask a question before going to those who have already asked one. Any first questions here? If not, Mr. Floretta?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bernie Floretta, Precinct 1. I don't have a question regarding budgets, and I hope it's not off-topic. My question isn't off-topic. But I was looking at the Shrewsbury vision of the portrait of the graduate. And a number of values are listed in the portrait of a graduate, including critical thinking, leadership skills, innovation, resilience, collaboration, and global citizenship. The one value that seems to be missing from here is citizenship, American citizenship, the rights, responsibilities, and privileges. It would seem to me that when we're struggling to get people for turnout in voting, like at the local election, for example, the town election, we're lucky if we get 10% turnout or 15% turnout. It would seem to be a focus on citizenship, responsibilities, as well as privileges, should be up there with the values that are listed for the others, with the others.
I certainly think that's an appropriate question, given that the efforts are to achieve that outcome of the vision. So I would ask the chair if she'd like to respond.
No, thank you very much. I would note that at the state level, there was a requirement that we bring more civics into our classrooms, and I believe it's at both the eighth and 11th grade levels. That is now a formalized part of the curriculum. I can tell you, with an eighth grader, he came home one day and said to me, "Mom, do you put your shopping cart away?" And I said, "What?" And he said, "It's an idea of whether or not you're a good human. Are you a good person? Do you take care of others? You take care of your community." And so our schools are trying to come up with ways to help kids think about how to be good community members, and that is now formalized and part of the educational programming in the schools. But I completely agree with you, and would again invite people to participate as we relook at these values this fall in our next strategic planning process. If there are things that are missing and things that you want us to be doing, that is a perfect way for you to engage and help us with that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Further comments or questions? Deena?
Deena Nichols, Precinct 7. Quickly, on the, the, sorry, the VOTAC, with the monies that are not being spent this year, that had last year, I think I heard a million dollars, but then I saw in the budget it looked like half a million possibly, that we would have anticipated spending this year, but we were not because of the changes. Was there any thought to, given the need's not gone away, but the need for the money has right now, has there been any thought to preserving those funds in some way so that in the event that those are needed in the short term down the road for similar types of alternatives, that they would be available versus having to come back to us next year and asking us to put that money back in the budget?
Sure.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, Lindsay.
And I think you're talking about the balancing act of the operating budget. There are very limited ways that we can sort of save money from year to year. We have funded our circuit breaker account to its fullest level, which is one of the few mechanisms that we have as a school district to kind of put money in the bank, so to speak. But there are not ways that we can sort of easily transfer over from year to year. I think we have a balancing act to make, and as a district, we're proposing what's on page six for investments around a lot of those staffing positions that we talked about, that we do feel are critical this year, that those are meaningful investments and important for us, even though we know we have this large technical challenge. So it is the act that we did as a school committee to sort of make that proposal for all of you today. But I, again, appreciate the need and concern.
Further comments or questions with reference to the school department operating Yes, Mr. Beauvier.
Mo Beauvier, Precinct 1. Just, there is, I think, a kind of consensus of concern about the vocational problem that we're facing. And I don't know if expanded existing regional schools or new regional schools are solutions. But as I was sitting here, I'm always trying to think about what can I do to positively support the school department in finding a solution to a problem like this. And I am a big fan of the school department. They do an incredible job, and it's one of the reasons many people come to Shrewsbury to get that quality education that we provide. And as I sat here, I was thinking, well, we need to talk to our state legislators. This is a state policy. Not surprisingly, the superintendent of schools already thought of that, and they're going to meet with both our representative and our state senator, who are both also very responsive. But as you all know, there's over 10,000 bills every year brought to the legislature. And trying to make something a priority for our legislative delegation and for the state as a whole is not an easy task. And I don't think the school department by itself can do it. So I just wanted to say that I, for one, will be talking to both of them to make sure they understand that this really is a big statewide issue. The supply and demand here is a really significant thing. And I know they will be very responsive, but to the extent that we can expand that out will be very important. So if everybody, every town meeting member were to do that, that would really, I think, make a difference in terms of what kind of priority this would be.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
If I may briefly, Mr. Moderator?
Of course.
There is nothing worse than as one of your elected representatives to stand in front of you and say, "This is not a problem that we can solve on our own." But it is not one that we can solve on our own, certainly not within the operating budget that we're putting before you today to work on. There are many ways that we will try to, I think, nibble at the edges of this problem, but it is significantly bigger, and I really do appreciate your sentiments. Thank you.
Further comments and questions with reference to the school department operating budget? Yes. Good morning.
Hi, Suzanne Remington, Precinct 9. I just want to make a quick comment about a gentleman a few speakers ago talked about the teacher salaries and staffing chart. Anecdotally, I work with about maybe 20, 25 school districts in the state, and Shrewsbury, I don't know if this is actually a fact, Mrs. Evernand and Mr. Sawyer, but we have a relatively high number of staff with master's degrees and doctorates in Shrewsbury. So when we talk about averages, in order to get a super clear picture, because it has to do with the steps and how much people get paid, we also have to look at what kind of education these educators have. If you have a highly educated staff, it costs more. So that, I don't, I'm not asking you to outline it because I know you don't need more work to do and to put more statistics in your budget, but that is a factor to consider when we compare with different districts, the salaries. And I just have one comment, if I may.
Right ahead.
The technical education issue, it, the driving force behind it, because I've been following this for many years, I work with a very, very high at-risk population of mostly adolescents. And it's an equity issue in our state. It's a lot of it that was the driving force behind it. So while our state is moving in that direction of equity for all of our students, we're not a gateway city, right? There's like 13 gateway cities with an incredibly high population of impoverished families. So while our state is figuring this out and we're advocating at the state level, I appreciate your efforts to think outside the box, because it won't be a quick solution. So I just wanted to get that in there. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you very much. Further comments and questions with reference to the school department operating budget? Ms. Golden, I recall that you had your hand up earlier. You all set? Yeah, I'm not forcing you to ask a question. Just making sure everyone who had a hand up had a chance to ask. Oh, look at this. Roberta? Go ahead. Stand up and identify yourself, please. Yep, hold on.
This may be out of the box. As we, congratulate everybody on the early childhood endeavor that you've been going through, and certainly the new schools and all that. But in every act that the legislature produces, there's always something about pre-K through higher education, public schools. And I know that we don't have that, and I know the whole money thing and the whole thing, but what is being done for pre-K through to grade one? That's an age group where we all know, we've had children, you know, development is just so crucial. Are they getting services? Do they have to pay for them in our community? I'm just a little concerned about that at this point.
Thank you very much. Ms. Happenin?
I'll take a high-level answer, and Dr. Sawyer will correct me if I get any of my facts wrong. We do provide preschool services for a portion of the students in the town of Shrewsbury. And how that happens is there are young children, I believe ages 2.9 to 5, who qualify for special education services and deserve those services the town is required and the school department is required to provide them. But in order to do it in an inclusive fashion, and that we don't just have students of high need in a room, we also invite others to apply for spots in our preschool program. Those students pay tuition to be part of our preschool, and so that's how that works today. And tuition is still, we don't have tuition at kindergarten. We didn't even talk about that. That's huge. It's really great. But we do still have, we do still have tuition for those students who are joining our tuition or fee-based preschool program. One of the things that we are looking at as a community in partnership with the Board of Selectmen, as I said, we're doing this space study for the public schools. We've had a recent report about that, is starting to prepare for the possibility that pre-K may become required, just as kindergarten, you know, that might happen to us. And then would we have the space to take care of that is one first-order question. Second order would certainly be, would we have the operating budget to sustain it? And so that is very much on our minds and possibly on the horizon.
Thank you very much. Further comments or questions? Yes, sir.
Mark Willingham, Precinct 9. I was curious, it looked like the overall student population fell a couple hundred between last year and this year. Do you have a trend going out the next three to five years? It feels relatively flat right over the last.
Yeah, it is really relatively flat. So the schools grew quite a bit in the 90s and 2000s, and we're kind of at a plateau. The recent drop in enrollment we're largely seeing at the pre-K and K level, particularly around COVID. Many people who would have sent their kids to kindergarten were opting to keep their child home and not in. That is not unique to Shrewsbury. That's true really across the board in public education. We haven't quite seen those kids all come back, so we're wondering, did they enroll in private schools? Are they at St. Mary's? Are they somewhere else? And in those. Are they somewhere else in those programs? Will we maybe see a bump in second grade next year and that those children come back? So we are monitoring that and paying attention to it, but the rapid growth that we had over a number of years certainly has plateaued. I know we've done some work looking at our enrollment populations on the out years. Do you want to add any more to that?
Sure. I would just add quickly that we do look at a number of different enrollment projections. We just had a demographer do a 10-year enrollment forecast for us as part of the pre-K through 12 space study. And on Page 38 is more of kind of a short-term next-year look at enrollment projections, but for the next couple of years, it does look, as you indicated, a pretty flat line with some ups and downs. I will say that for this coming kindergarten class, which has been the most hard to predict previously because we had kind of a tuition-based program and limited seats, now we have plenty of seats, but then we had COVID, so it's really kind of a floppy number, but we are looking over-projection for kindergarten, probably by about 25 to 30 students for next year. On a pre-K through 12 basis, again, we're looking pretty much kind of a flat line, a little bit up and down.
Thank you very much. I was curious, and just a comment on the Voc Tech, because I'm certainly a big supporter. Once, it's a pity this has happened so quickly, right? It's just upon us. Something that could be done quickly is to really engage, I think Dr. Sawyer mentioned sort of work-study, or a lot of people run companies maybe in this room, and, you know, we can offer roles that may not lead to a welding certification, but are actual meaningful roles at the high school education level, college, PhD, you know, they can kind of see that. So I would think with some outreach, we could help, you know, quickly.
Thank you very much. Further comments and questions with reference to the operating budget of the Shrewsbury Public School System? I am not seeing any hands regarding this section. So that would now take us back to the Blue Book to finish up the budget consideration on Page 25 of the Report of the Finance Committee, which takes care of 159, the operating support As folks are thinking about that, I would like to take two seconds as we complete the operating budget for the coming year and just recognize two individuals who for years played a very dedicated role. My neighbor Dale McGee, who chose not to run on the school committee, and my neighbor and great friend and commissioner of agriculture, John LeBeau, who also chose to retire. So thank you, gentlemen, both. Unless there are any further questions regarding this article, the operating budget, we are on Page 25 of the Report of the Finance Committee. The motion has been made and seconded. You have an affirmative recommendation from the Finance Committee. I'm now ready to call a vote unless there are further questions. Not seeing any. All those who are in favor shall signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it unanimously. Thank you very much. We will now move on from Article Five to Bundle Five, Articles Six, Seven, and Eight. They're the purple section toward the top of your bundling cheat sheet. Mr. DePaolo.
All right, try to get it right this time, Mr. Moderator. I move the printed motions under Articles Six, Seven, and Eight.
Second.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends by an eight-to-zero vote, passage of Articles Six, Seven, and Eight.
Mr. Mizikar.
Quite simply, these are sources outside of the tax levy that we use to fund the operating budget and other programs throughout the year.
Comments or questions with reference to Article Six? With reference to, oh, yes, Mr. Schatzke. Could we have a microphone, please?
Dale Schatzke, Precinct Seven. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to mention, I also have a copy of Cushion's manual, so there's at least three or four.
We should all get together for coffee. Kevin's house, he'll host.
I've always wanted to know, how are these numbers determined? And this year, Six seems to be more than usual, and Seven seems to be less than usual. Is there a particular formula for how these sums are determined?
Thank you very much. Mr. Mizikar.
These numbers are exactly the same as they have been, so there have been no changes with regards to Six. It's part of a franchise agreement between the Board of Selectmen and the Selco Commission to operate cable TV within the community. Article Seven is a payment in lieu of taxes for property that would otherwise be taxed if Selco was a private entity. And Article Eight is a traditional number that is recommended by the assessors to reduce the tax levy from our savings account, one of them free cash.
Thank you. Further comments or questions with reference to Article Six, Seven, or Eight? Not seeing any. We'll call the vote on Bundle Five. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. We will now move to Bundle Six, Article Nine. Mr. DePaolo.
I move the printed motion under Article Nine.
Second.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends by unanimous eight-to-zero vote, passage of Article Nine.
Mr. Mizikar.
This moves $3 million into the override stabilization account, which is a centerpiece of the override commitment that was passed in May of 2021. This is putting funds in to be used in future years for stabilization of finances and continuing operations.
Comments or questions with reference to Article Nine? Yes, yes, Mr. Cray.
Please, Mr. Cray from Precinct Two, could you please identify the source for where the funds are coming from?
Absolutely. Mr. Mizikar.
So anytime it says raise and appropriate, that means it's coming from the general tax levy, and that's where these funds are coming from, taxation.
Further comments or questions to, regarding Article Nine? Mr. Malina.
Jason Malina, Precinct One. I just want to take a moment to thank the board, the two boards, right? The school committee and Board of Selectmen for having the courage to provide this stable funding for many years. And obviously, we know that there's a time limit to that, and thank you for, I'm glad that it's extending out a little bit longer, which is great. And I know there's a commitment, but here's the ask. I know in light of all that we just heard from the school committee report relative to mental health and to, you know, the vocational side of it, I ask that there is continued courage to continue to think about this agreement, and if there's a need down the line to ask for more funding, ask the question. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments or questions regarding?
Middle section.
Yes, hello. Please come forward and identify yourself.
Milin Khanidkar, Precinct Nine. I have a general question. Is there a minimum or benchmark amount that has been recommended to be moved to this stabilization account every year for next five years? And if it is yes, what that amount look like? And if it is no, are we considering that?
Thank you. Mr. Mizikar.
Sure. So we constructed a four-year plan to start with in the spring of May of 2021, and we identified in those first two years that we would contribute the amount that was put in, a little over $3 million last year. This year, our original financial projection only had us placing about $1.4 million into this account. However, our local receipts, which is economically-driven, more discretionary spending within the community, like meals tax, cannabis excise tax, motor vehicle excise tax, came in at higher than we had anticipated, so we're able to contribute the roughly $1.6 million in additional funding while meeting our expenditure requirements. So there isn't a plan per se, but we are contributing more in year two than we had originally anticipated, and that means, as Chair Heffernan said earlier, and the Board of Selectmen have talked about at their meetings, we are able to identify a fifth year that we will get out of this override when we only thought we were going to get four. So in future years, as soon as next year potentially, we could begin to draw down on this account, but it's really, as we look at the revenues, that will be done in the October-through-November timeframe, and that will be debated by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee as to what the revenue recommendations will be at the start of the budget process. So I just encourage you all to tune in at that time to see how that will play out next year, but we're definitely in a much better position than we all thought we would have been.
Thank you very much. Further comments or questions with reference to Article Nine? Not hearing or seeing any, I will call the vote. All those in favor of Article Nine shall signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. It's unanimous. We have now Bundle Seven, which is Articles Eleven, Twelve, Fourteen, and Sixteen. Having to do with, yes? Point of order, yes?
Article Ten?
No, we're coming back to that. We'll be coming back to that one. It's all on your color-coded sheet here, folks. Article Eleven, Twelve, Fourteen, and Fifteen will be, Sixteen, excuse me, will be covered in Bundle Seven. Mr. DePaolo.
I move the printed motion under Articles Eleven, Twelve, Fourteen, and Sixteen.
Second.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends by unanimous eight-to-zero vote, the passage of Articles Eleven, Twelve, Fourteen, and Sixteen.
Thank you. Mr. Mizikar.
The reason these articles are all bundled together is they are, they fund the ongoing operating expenses for fiscal year 23 for our utilities. Our utilities, which include our solid waste program, water, sewer, and storm water, all generate their own revenue through the assessment of rates and fees. Those rates and fees can only be expended on the operation of those particular departments. So when you pay your water bill, know that your water bill is being used only to fund the operations of the water department and the operation of the water treatment plant. So again, these articles are bundled, they include the ongoing operating expenses of the various utilities. Article Eleven provides funding for the solid waste program at $2,632, excuse me, $2,632,322. Article Twelve provides funding for the sewer system. Article Fourteen provides funding for the water department, and Article Sixteen provides the operations for our storm water services. Just like the operating budget, these are broken out into salaries and expenses and separate appropriations, and we, of course, would be happy to answer any questions related to these special accounts.
Comments or questions with reference to Article Eleven? Missy.
Missy Hollenbeck, Precinct Nine. In regards to Article Eleven, I know we just did a new contract for waste hauling and recycling, or it just seems like yesterday with COVID, but when is our new contracting coming up for hauling and recycling? And I know there's a whole bunch of, you know, recycling, processing, and all that kind of thing, so what, the general date for?
Very good, thank you. Mr. Mizikar.
July 1st, 2024, so fiscal year 25.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Further comments or questions with reference to Article Eleven? Article Eleven, Ms. Dearing.
Martha Dearing, Precinct Four. With the new sewer systems going into Worcester on Route 20, are those costs included in what we're seeing here?
Mr. Mizikar.
With regards to operating ongoing expenses, yes. With regards to capital investments, including things like the installation of sewer mains and pump stations, those will be included in a future bundle.
Further comments and questions regarding Article Eleven? Yes, John, how are you this morning?
John Segal, Precinct Two. Has there been or will there be any recourse or remediation with waste management for the non-performance of their yard waste collection? And secondly, are we paying Pellegrino directly, or is Waste Management paying Pellegrino for the pickup that they did? And is that a reduction in cost? Because there was supposed to be two cycles of pickup with Waste Management, and Pellegrino did it once only.
Mr. Mizikar.
So yes, we, I'll take the opportunity to apologize for everyone for the challenges that we've had through our hauler, Waste Management. We are doing everything we can to get them to perform. We pay for services after they're completed, so therefore, we have not paid Waste Management for any service that they've not completed. With regards to utilization of Pellegrino Trucking, we've contracted with them directly and worked with them for the single week to provide those services. In the end, the weekly service provided by Pellegrino is actually more expensive than the cost of the final two weeks under the negotiated agreement with Waste Management, so it would be a slight increase in cost, but we'll handle that through the budget and reserves of the solid waste enterprise account.
Further comments or questions with reference to Eleven? Articles Eleven, Twelve, Fourteen, Sixteen. Further comments or questions? Not seeing any. I will call the vote on Bundle Seven, Articles Eleven, Twelve, Fourteen, and Sixteen. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. We're unanimous. Article Twenty-Two, fiscal year 2023, PEG Access Operating Budget, requires a majority vote. Article Twenty-Two, Mr. DePaolo.
I move the printed motion under Article Twenty-Two.
Second.
Question has been moved and seconded. Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends by an eight-to-zero vote, passage of Article Twenty-Two.
Article Twenty-Two, any comments? Oh, I forgot the burn rule. Mr. Mizikar.
So briefly, this article funds the day-to-day operations of SMC. We receive these funds in from Selco, they're then passed over to SMC, so they pass through our books and determine, or set up through an enterprise account under the state law. In addition, this year, $12,000 in taxation is being used to cover the cost of productions of meeting like this and boards and committee meetings.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments with reference to Article Twenty-Two? Article Twenty-Two, not seeing or hearing any. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. We're unanimous. We will now move on to Bundle Nine, Articles Ten, Thirteen, Fifteen, and Seventeen, having to do with the town's capital improvement plans. Mr. DePaolo.
I move the printed motions under Article Ten, Thirteen, Fifteen, and Seventeen.
Second.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends by an eight-to-zero vote, passage of Articles Ten, Thirteen, Fifteen, and Seventeen.
Mr. Mizikar.
These are just that, capital improvement plans for both general municipal operations that are, those are the departments that are not utilities, and then each of the utilities, including sewer, water, and storm water, these are extraordinary one-time investments that are made in those systems and our departments. They're, the expenses are detailed out within your book. Happy to answer any questions.
Comments or questions with reference to Article Ten, Thirteen, Fifteen, and Seventeen? Mr. Budenhagen. One second, Gene, they're coming to you.
Gene Budenhagen, Precinct One. I have a couple of questions in reference to highway.
Could you hold the mic a little closer, Gene?
Couple of questions in reference to the vehicles for the fire in the highway. Going all-electric, is the charging station cost for the highway department and the fire department included in these totals?
Mr. Mizikar.
So we are partnering with Selco, yes. We're in the process of, there's actually two charging stations already at the town hall for anyone to use, and then we're planning charging stations at the highway garage, so Selco- And then we're planning charging stations at the highway garage, so Selco is our partner on that. With regards to many of the opportunities that we have with electric vehicles, since we are a, you know, a daily operation where we would use the vehicles under most circumstances from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., we have the ability to not require very high-speed chargers, and a conventional 110 outlet would be sufficient in many instances. So we'll utilize all those opportunities. I do want to note that the fire vehicle is a traditional internal combustion engine, so it would not need charging.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. Mr. Budenhagen, a follow-up?
Just one follow-up. What would be the cost of those charging stations? That the town is sharing the cost?
Mr. Mizikar.
Yeah, the town is not sharing in any of those costs, so Selco is securing grants for them.
Perhaps the general manager of Selco is here and could shed some light on that.
I don't see him at this point.
Perhaps he's in the men's room. All right. So with reference to Article 10, 13, 15, 17, further questions or comments? Ms. Hollenbach.
And if I can beg the moderator's permission for possibly an off comment or question of the police department, not relating to capital, but if, and you can stop me anytime, of course, Mr. Moderator. So with the TASER bundle, and this is for capital, does this also include training, which is not capital? So is that the training for using it in the?
Perfectly reasonable request. Mr. Mizikar, just one second.
Sure, the chief can reinforce anything that's needed, but we already have tasers, and our officers are trained on them routinely, and it's part of the operating budget.
Okay, thank you.
Chief Anderson, would you like to add anything?
Yes, we do have two officers that, with the police department, that certified to train in tasers.
Okay, thank you very much, chief. Ms. Hollenbach.
Again, this is your permission, Mr. Moderator. Back when you were first elected as a Board of Selectmen, you might not remember this, or you might. At the time, I was a new town meeting member, and I brought before the town moderator meeting an energy committee, which got, I withdrew as a citizens petition. And one of your solutions was that we met as a citizens group with you, Matt Beaton, a few other residents of Shrewsbury, we met at your home to kind of come up with some solutions for possibly energy committee issues. And what we did is we talked about various things that we could do in Shrewsbury for energy, and what were proposed for energy committees. And at the time, one of the things that they were talking about is having energy-efficient vehicles for police and fire departments. And this was about 10, 12 years ago. And we all had a really good laugh about the thought of police departments having, driving around in Priuses and stuff. And I just want to point out, this is how, how fast technology has changed, that we're now actually seeing in Shrewsbury, charging stations and electric vehicles. So, you know, things that we thought were impossible or really laughable 10 years ago are now possible and now happening. So, you know, we really have to keep this in mind, that, you know, like I said, we all, we all thought it was kind of funny. I mean, I did too, you know. Seriously, the police station in a Prius, an old Prius from 10 years ago. So Moderator, Mr. Moderator, thank you for allowing me a memory lane, but I just wanted to point out to everybody, as we can see, things change really quickly. But thank you.
Thank you. Further comments and questions? Mr. Segilniak, I always ruin your last name, John. John?
Yes, you have a replacement VAC truck between water and sewer for $600,000. Can we get some description of what that is and what it does?
Mr. Mizikar.
Or to Director Holland or Superintendent Rowley.
Mr. Holland, who wants this one, guys? John, if you've never seen one of these work, they're absolutely amazing. You want to go out when it's in service and watch it. It's worth every dollar when you need it. All right, Dan.
Thank you. And that's a great question, and it certainly is some sticker shock.
Please identify yourself fully, Dan.
Dan Rowley, Water and Sewer Superintendent. So we have a VAC truck, VAC is the brand. Currently, it's, it's orange, like the rest of our DPW fleet. It has a big tank on the back of it, and then on the front, it has a very large hose reel. We use it for a multitude of different tasks. We use it on water main breaks for vacuum excavation, where we actually vac, vacuum out soils using water. It's a safer way to work around the many utilities in our ground, including high-pressure gas, electricity. And we use it also for sewer system work, vacuuming out manholes, and then we also use it for jetting if we have a clog in a sewer system. So it's an absolute critical piece of equipment for our division, and the one we currently have is from 2006 or 2007, so we're looking to update that to a new piece of equipment.
Further comments or, thank you, Dan. Further comments or questions with reference to Articles 10, 13, 15, and 17? I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor of Bundle 9, Articles 10, 13, 15, and 17 shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. We're unanimous. Bundle 10, Article 18, to fund the replacement of Oak Middle School windows, this requires a two-thirds vote. Mr. DiPaolo.
I move the printed motion under Article 18.
Second.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends by an eight-to-zero vote, the passage of Article 18.
Mr. Mizikar.
Last October, we put in $50,000, we put $50,000 in place to fund the design work associated with the replacement of windows and doors at the Oak Middle School. And this takes the next step towards funding the actual construction of that. The reason that this requires a two-thirds vote is, as town, many town meeting members may know, the MSBA partners with municipalities, and in this case, would provide up to 52% of the cost for this project. MSBA also requires that cities and towns demonstrate that they have the full budget on hand at the time that they consider the vote at their meeting to fund this project. So we have to demonstrate that we have enough money to do it on our own, and then they will give us a grant. So in order to not unnecessarily tie up cash, we are asking town meeting to allow us to demonstrate a full-budget capability by allowing us to be able to borrow. We never intend to borrow the funds because we'll use the state's dollars. So that is $495,000, or roughly 52% of the cost of this project. And then the balance of $455,000 would be used from funds that we already have on hand in free cash.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. Comments or questions with reference to Article 18? Yes. Oh, you don't have to do that if you wanted to speak from the school department. Please join us, Ms. Heffernan.
Thank you very much. I do just want to let everybody know, the school committee did address this matter recently, 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 and we are unanimously asking for your support of this motion, or this warrant article. The partnership that our schools and our community has with MSBA is incredible, and we get great value out of it, and this will certainly extend the useful life of the Oak Building. So thank you.
Thank you. Comments or questions with reference? Ms. McWilliams, I don't think we've heard from you today. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. Okay, Carol McWilliams, Precinct 1. The first comment I want to make is to thank the school committee for their excellent presentation.
Could you speak up just a little bit?
For their excellent presentation. It was very thorough. My comment has to do, and my question is, I've received several emails from members or residents of Precinct 1, asking me to vote no on this. So I have comments and maybe clarification. Is there any way that we could use stimulus funds to provide for these windows? If you believe everything you hear on the news, stimulus funds have arrived in the towns, they haven't been fully used, and there may be more funds coming. So rather than using free cash, is there a possibility of using stimulus funds?
Mr. Mizikar.
It would be an allowable use, but town meeting does not have control over the stimulus funds, so all you would be able to do is not support the passage of this article, and then we'd have to reconsider other options, which may include stimulus funds or may not.
Would that be a way of guaranteeing to the grant organization you referred to that we have the money?
Only if they were voted and set aside by the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, thanks.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 18? Do we have any first-time questions? Right, yes, hello, good morning.
Again, I'm Bridget Hilton, Precinct 7. I just wanted to ask, kind of a piggyback off of Ms. Hollenbach's question, how much consideration has been given to selecting the most energy-efficient windows and doors for the school as we look to the future? I think making this kind of investment needs to have a long-term strategy, even if it means that the cost may be immediately higher.
Thank you. Mr. Mizikar.
If I could ask Keith Baldinger to provide an overview of this initiative and our other energy initiatives.
Keith Baldinger, Public Buildings Division Manager, specifically for this project. We do have state guidelines. MSBA will require us to have a certain level of efficiency in all the windows, and then working with our architect, we try to make the project as efficient as possible.
Thank you very much. Further comments or questions with reference to Article 18? John?
John Segalnik, Precinct 2. If this passes, will the windows be replaced this summer, or will we have to wait until next summer?
Thank you. Mr. Mizikar.
Next summer.
Next summer, John. Further comments and questions with reference to Article 18? Ms. Cassavant.
Thank you, Beth Cassavant, Precinct 8. I just have a question about the question that came from the floor, about potentially using stimulus dollars for the Oak Middle School window replacement. My question, if I follow this correctly, is if we were to use that money out of stimulus dollars, we'd be spending our money for something that we are pretty much confident that the MSBA will cover. And I just wanted to confirm with the manager that that's true, because I would like to make sure that our stimulus dollars are used for things that we wouldn't have an opportunity to fund in a different way, outside of our operating budget.
Very good. Mr. Mizikar.
Yes, that is correct. We are, you know, we are through the system, the MSBA system, frequently, and we have a high level of confidence, since we were invited in, that we will receive their matching portion through this project.
Thank you very much. Further comments or questions regarding Article 18, the replacement windows at Oak Middle School? Anyway, Ms. Dearing, I'm sorry, I'll get to you in a second. Ms. Dearing?
Martha Dearing, Precinct 4. Unlike Ms. Heffernan, I was alive in the 1960s. And I actually graduated from this school in 1967. So I don't know if the windows or doors have been changed since then, but certainly they need to be. And I think we have to look also at the cost-saving. When we get something more energy-efficient in here, it's going to actually save us on other costs. I strongly support this article.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zikos.
Paul Zikas, Precinct 1. Paul Zikas, Precinct 1, thank you. As a follow-up to Ms. McWilliams' comment, with respect to funding this, if the MSBA picks up their share, that we believe that they will, as they've been consistently good partners with us, the balance that we're paying is, is in essence, from taxation. Right. So I think, I think the point my colleague was making was, if we were able to take this from the stimulus monies, and I realize that would take a vote of the board to commit to that, would we have that stimulus money available? In other words, how much in stimulus money have we gotten? How much have we spent? I know that there's millions of dollars still committed that we have not received, but we expect to receive. So would this limit the taxation on, on folks who are watching from home and allow us to pull this money from, from the stimulus?
Mr. Mizikar.
So a couple of things. So with regards to the stimulus dollars, the town anticipates receiving. So in total, through the American Rescue Plan Act, we anticipate receiving $11.5 million, and we received the first half of that during the summer of 2021, so last summer. We do anticipate receiving the second half in the months of July and August of this year. To date, we've committed roughly $4.6 million in funds into various projects and programs. So of the funds that we, we have on hand, you know, a little less than $2 million, a little less than $1 million, it hasn't been set aside for any particular program or project. The second part with regards to taxation is, since we're identifying free cash, it, it has no bearing on the tax rate. These dollars were already raised and not used, or came in, you know, as revenue from local receipts in addition to what we anticipated. So the vote, as it's proposed in this motion, has no effect on the tax rate.
Follow-up, Mr. Zikos.
Yes, thank you. If this was not to pass, would the Board of Selectmen vote to take those monies from the stimulus funds?
I don't know that the board has had a chance to debate that matter. Anyone from the board like to speak on it? Mr. DiPaolo?
Thank you. Obviously, we have not made that decision because we haven't even approached the subject. What I will tell you is, over the next couple of months, the board is going to be discussing what we'd like to do with that money, and start allocating it to various projects and services that we think we'd like to be able to address, that we haven't been able to address over the years. If we don't do this now, and we have to go with the full million-dollar commitment, then we're tying up 955, whatever it is, we're tying that money up for at least a year. So personally, I don't think it's a good idea. Why should we tie up a half, an extra half a million dollars, or a million dollars, and for, for a year, when we have a mechanism to do this and only tie up, or spend a half a million dollars? So I don't know what the board would say. I can't commit, but it doesn't seem to make sense to me.
Thank you, Mr. Zikos. I'll be happy to come back to you, but we do one follow-up and then I'll...
One other quick question. On the MSBA monies, though, if we were to agree to commit the American Recovery Act dollars, the pandemic funding, then the MSBA, we'd be able to show them that we have that funding, and they would still partner with us, so we wouldn't lose that opportunity, correct?
Is there a timing matter, Mr. Mizikar?
No, there's, well, ultimately, there is a limitation on timing, but in, in the context of the question, American Rescue Plan Act funds could be set aside as the towns match. Not what's proposed here, but in theory, that could be used as the towns portion, yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator, town manager, and others.
Further comments or questions regarding Article 22? Not seeing any, I'll call the vote on this. Excuse me, Finance Committee member.
Dennis O'Connell, Precinct 7. Just one clarification. If we do pass this today, and then we decide to allocate, you know, the other funding to it, is that possible? So we're not ruling out that we can't do the, the American Recovery funding for this if we vote this today, if we approve this.
It's a question of timing.
Well, you're, so a yes vote at town meeting puts sufficient funding in place to fund the entire cost of the project. If the Board of Selectmen were to debate that after this, I mean, that's obviously a possibility, but that wasn't the intention. The intention is to move forward after today, as proposed through this motion, using free cash and a borrowing authorization that we'll never access and use MSBA dollars.
And then a follow-up question for the Selectmen. I would believe that we are planning to spend all of that funding that we get, all the relief funding, whether it's spent on this or something else. Or are we going to leave some of it on the table?
Chairman DiPaolo?
Sorry, thank you. No, we intend to use it. We have plenty of needs. I'm sure there won't be, there are the projects that, that we're going to come up short on, so it'll all be spent.
Okay, so the passage of this is to get us on the way to getting new windows. We're not really leaving any money on the table. We're not raising taxes. Is that a fair way to describe it?
That's correct.
The manager concurs with your...
Thank you.
...presentation. Further comments? Further comments or questions with regard to this item? Ms. Hollenbach?
Lisa Hollenbach, Precinct 9. Sometimes I'm not a very bright bear, and I haven't had my coffee this morning.
Could you speak up more clearly?
I said, "Sometimes I'm not a very bright bear, and I haven't had my coffee this morning." So, we want to say yes to this today because this is a budgetary meeting, this is town meeting, this is what we do. And by saying yes to what is proposed today, we are allocating money, and this American Stimulus Plan money that we can spend in other ways, does that need to have town meeting approval that, you know, you can spend it on, let's say, the senior center needs, you know, $20,000 here for a special ramp or whatever. You can spend that, you know, whatever the community really needs. You don't need to have our approval with that, correct?
Mr. Mizikar.
That is correct.
Okay. So, by us allocating the money as it is intended here in town meeting, we are freeing up that American Stimulus Plan to allow our town to use funding the way it was intended by the federal government for those projects, almost kind of like in the days of when we had block grants kind of thing. You know, small projects here and there, that, things that we really need. An example that comes to mind is the Rotary Club's, you know, friend fridge that we're putting out there, little chunks of money for little things that we need to get going in our community that are awesome. So, I'm going to really ask everyone not to start twiddling with this right now, but just to leave it the way it is and to vote the way it is, as intended, in the pack-up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hollenbach. Further comments or questions regarding Article 18? Not seeing or hearing any, well, hold on. Carol McWilliams, yes, please.
Carol McWilliams, Precinct 1. I'm not trying to belabor a point, but my point was, because there is money, lots of money coming from the government, I wouldn't want to hold up, you know, the installation of any geoficient windows, but I'm just asking that if we can then take that stimulus money and put it back into whatever free accounts we have. I think we're a very fortunate community. We've done some incredible things. We've done some, built some beautiful buildings. With the economic climate in this country right now, how I run my budget is hoping that I have certain things in reserve, so I hate to deplete free accounts that we already have. And so, I'm saying, I'm not trying to stop anything, I'm just saying, let's be very conservative with our funding, and if we can use that stimulus money to provide for the windows, fine. If we can't, I know the windows need to be installed. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DiPaolo?
The most conservative approach is the approach that we're taking. We're using essentially $500,000 in free cash and demonstrating the capacity to borrow the other $500,000. If we used the stimulus funds and we tell MSBA that we have the money to pay for it, whether we have to use it all in the end or not, we have to encumber it through the life of the project, because we have to demonstrate to them that we have the money. So, we can't use that money at all until we're reimbursed. So, we're tying up a million dollars in ARPA funds if we use this approach.
Just a comment...
Could you just speak more loudly?
Sorry. Because of the two and a half override, I think, I think I'm speaking for a great percentage of our population. I think we have to be very careful how we spend our tax dollars, and if we have money in reserve right now, because of, as I said, the climate in this country, I think we, I just want to be safe rather than sorry.
Thank you very much. Further comments or questions with reference to Article 18? I'm not seeing or hearing anyone. Therefore, I'm going to call, yes, I see someone, Dina. Mark, we need a mic.
Hi, Dina Nichols, Precinct 7. Sorry to belabor this, and I'm not trying to challenge the process here at all. I do think it's a very somewhat subjective decision whether you're going to do, how you use the ARPA funds, number one. I think what I'm hearing is that they should be first put towards essential items, versus the need to have, not the nice to have. But secondly, I understand, as Selectman DiPaolo mentioned, that the timing of this process and tying up the money, that does make sense as well. So, there's, I understand the rationale for both perspectives, but what I'm taking away more than anything is a sense that the folk, the voting folks, the citizens, would like to have some input possibly on how the ARPA funds are used moving forward. So, I'd like to just suggest that as something to consider as we proceed and evaluate how funds are going to be used, that remain to be used. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Further comments or questions with reference to Article 18? Yes, down front.
Diane Jones, Precinct 8. It is true, yes, that with the windows, we will save money because of energy efficiency?
Mr. Mizikar? Mr. Baldinger?
Yes, they are more efficient, and a lot of the mechanical systems in these doors and windows are not properly functioning, so they will be much more energy efficient.
Thank you. Yes, question right up the front.
Shimon Khan...
Please stand and identify yourself. Thank you.
Shimon Khan, Precinct 10. I just wanted a clarification from you. Is this the basic requirement that we're meeting for energy efficiency, or the best out there? Because if we're investing, I would think we would want cutting-edge, whatever.
Mr. Baldinger?
Keith Baldinger, Public Buildings Division. So, we are looking at what's best for the building. So, there are many levels of windows, but we also have to work with the rest of the existing building envelope to make sure that we get the most efficient that works well with this building. Like, we've built the meal school, very tight building. The windows that will be here will probably be very similar in energy efficiency, but there are other factors involved with the envelope of the building, too, that we also are part of this project.
Thank you. Further comments or questions with reference to Article 18? Yes, good morning.
Good morning, Lee Abdallah, Precinct 6, and I'd like to move the question.
Motion's been made and seconded to move the question. This is not subject to debate. We will now move for consideration of moving Article 18. All those in favor of moving the question shall signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Okay, it is nearly unanimous. We will now move back to Article 18 for a vote. Article 18 to fund the replacement of the Oak Middle School windows. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye. All those opposed? The motion passes. We will now move to, oh, yeah, I did earlier. Yes, sir, oh, yes. On Article 9, we will now deal with Bundle 11. Article number 19, 20, 21, 23, 24, 25, 26. Mr. DiPaolo?
I move the printed motions under, printed motion under Articles 19, 20, 21, 23, 24, 25, and 26.
Second.
Motion's have been made and seconded. Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee unanimously by an eight to zero vote recommends passage of Articles 19, 20, 21, 23, 24, 25, and 26.
Mr. Mizikar?
This is probably the most eclectic group of any bundle, but it is a set of financial tran, articles that we consider at nearly every town meeting, annual town meeting. Briefly, to fund out-of-pocket costs for disabled police and firefighters in accordance with the general laws, to add funding to our insurance trust fund account where we pay insurance deductibles out of, to fund the general stabilization account, which is the town's rainy day fund, by increasing it by $750,000, to set annual spending limits on our revolving accounts. And revolving accounts are like enterprise funds, but they're not utilities, where we raise fees for particular purposes and then use those fees to cover the cost of those services. We will be receiving funding from the state for the improvement of roadways through Chapter 90. We'll be transferring our traditional amount of $18,000 to cemetery, from cemetery lots to perpetual care. And Article 26 provides funding for both the Lake Quinsigamon Commission and other lakes and waterways. That's a little bit different than prior years, as normally in the past, we've just funded initiatives through Lake Quinsigamon, but obviously, we have other water bodies and waterways within the community that could use the town's attention and benefit the residents with healthier water quality in places like Dean Park, Old Mill Pond, things like that, that are not within the Lake Quinsigamon watershed. So, we're proposing funds for that as well this year.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. Further comments or questions with regard to 19, 20, 21, 23, 24, 25, 26? Mr. Molina?
Jason Molina, Precinct 1. I have a question regarding Article 23. So, in terms of the Council of Aging and Transportation Fund, is that leveled from the last few years? And is that sufficient from the perspective of the council on providing services to the aging population? And then, similar with the Donahue Rowing Center, is that leveled from prior years?
Thank you. Mr. Mizikar?
Two things. With regards to council on aging, yes, that is a very traditional account. It is sufficient to cover the planned expenses for the fiscal year. The Donahue Rowing Center, the $400,000, is a little higher than what we traditionally put in there, because we were considering capital improvements. There's some deterioration in some of the masonry structure. We had it at $400,000 last year, but we weren't able to get the bids in with the amount of money, funding that we have, so we're requesting it to keep it at the higher level this year again as well. As soon as we complete that project, it'll likely go down in future years.
Thank you.
Further comments and questions? 19, 20, 21, 23, 24, 25, 26? Are there any? Yes, sir?
Tom Moore, Precinct 10. On Article 19, in the description, the value of this article is subject to change. What does that mean? Does that, it changes annually?
That is correct, yes. So, these are, these are paid in arrears, so $6,464 is what is required that we know of right now, because we pay them after those expenses occur, but it will likely change next year.
Thank you.
Certainly. Further comments or question with regards to this collection of articles? I'm not seeing any, therefore, we'll call the vote on Bundle 11. Article 19, 20, 21, 23, 24, 25, and 26. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The motions carry. We'll now move to a series of single article votes. Article 27, Mr. DiPaolo?
I move the printed motion under Article 27.
Second.
Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends by an eight to zero vote the passage of Article 27.
Mr. Mizikar?
This article proposes to fund a climate action and resiliency plan, which would be a community-informed plan that will allow the town, as an organization, us as the local government, to reduce our contribution to climate change by reducing or eliminating our greenhouse gas emissions. Further, it will prepare the town to respond and minimize impacts of climate change on our infrastructure, buildings, and other resources. The plan, which will be advised and facilitated by professional consultants and informed with resident input, will be actionable for the town and will inform and champion, but not compel, residents on how they and their households can reduce their own carbon emissions as they consider investments to their vehicles, homes, and other matters that impact climate. We are requesting town meeting appropriate $140,000 for this initiative. However, we will be seeking funding through the State Municipal Vulnerability Program to offset these costs. Any offset cost may allow funds to be turned back at the end of the project or be used to develop climate change, resiliency, and other initiatives. This plan, once created, will be championed and overseen by the newly created position of Assistant Director of Public Works. The idea for this project is being brought forth through collaboration of the Board of Selectmen and several residents, many of which are town meeting members. Board members and these residents met to discuss climate change and find an appropriate path forward. We look forward to the opportunity of assessing the current impacts that the town has on climate change and how to mitigate those in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. Comments or questions with reference to Article 27?
Are we agreeing communities? Yes, we are.
Yeah, just by way of note for newer members, we achieved green community status with the state some number of years ago, as I recall. Questions or comments? Article 27, yes?
Diane Jones, Precinct 8. Scientists worldwide agree overwhelmingly that climate change is real, it is the result of burning fossil fuels, and it is a very serious threat to us, our children, and our grandchildren. This is settled science. Last fall, at the October 2021 town meeting, the Board of Selectmen prioritized four goal areas, you may remember this. The first goal area is reliable infrastructure. It begins with this: Harden infrastructure to prepare for climate impacts. The Board of Selectmen's final goal area is effective government: Reduce the town's impact on climate change. Our town has identified these goals, but without a plan, goals go nowhere. With something this serious, we need priorities, a timeline, a way to measure success, a plan. There's strong support for this in town. 79% of Shrewsbury's residents, according to Selco's survey that they did last year, they want Selco to reduce carbon emissions, promote environmentally conscious practices, and balance environmental stewardship with fiscal responsibility. In response, Selco developed a net-zero roadmap, carbon-free electricity by 2032 or sooner. The Board of Selectmen enthusiastically endorsed Selco's net-zero roadmap. Selco management also suggested that Shrewsbury develop a climate action and resiliency plan. The first part of that plan is now well underway: Affordable, green, renewable electricity, but the rest of the job is up to us. It's up to us, the town meeting members, not Selco. As the legislative branch, we can do it. We can approve a plan that already has the full support of the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, Town Manager, and Selco. The threat of climate change is real and pressing with unthinkable costs to our children. The average high today and tomorrow is 68 degrees. And right now, it's kind of cool, but it's supposed to reach into the 90s. Summer in May, that is not normal. It's a trend. When you combine high heat and humidity, people die, especially low-income people without air conditioning, outdoor workers, children, those over 60 with COPD. It's a public health problem. I vote yes on Articles 27, Mr. Mizikar's proposal for a climate action and resiliency plan.
Thank you. Further comments or questions regarding Article 27? Just any new folks? Newer, let's see. Ms. Hollenbach, we're under double, oh, I'm sorry, no, wait one second, brand-new, right here, thank you. Get to you, the other three hands that were up.
Rahul Razan, Precinct 9. So, this may be a slight deviation from what we're talking about, but I was wondering if it was possible to hold a composting service or a place where we can dump organic waste, because it would encourage people of our town to reduce waste and actually just promote more organic lifestyle.
Thank you. Mr. Mizikar?
That's something that we can consider as a town, there's DEP regulations, but yes, it could be considered.
Thank you. Missy?
Missy Hollenbach, Precinct 9. So, I was one of those residents who came to the Board of Selectmen, and I want to thank you for listening to us, and I want to thank everyone, including town meeting members, for listening to me, Yamar, over the years. This, this article is... This article has been something that we've been slowly marching to in Shrewsbury for many years. It started kind of with the Green Communities Act, which we were now recently awarded, I believe, $146,000 from the state. The Mass DEP, we will be getting probably $3,800 for our Mass Municipal Recycling Dividends Program because the town has enacted two single-use bans for products such as the plastic bag ban and for their styrofoam ban. I don't think the Selectmen, or probably even Mr. Mizikah, know that yet. That'll be something we'll be getting, coming up. But Mass DEP is rewarding communities for enacting, reducing our waste. So, that's something that we've done. The other thing is, is that Mass Vulnerability Program, I know we've gotten funds for that over the years, and then also, we've passed the CPA program. So, again, we've gotten funds from the state for that. So, we have been getting funds from the state. We've been getting federal funds for doing environmentally correct programs. And then we also just saw the window program that we were just passed. So, we are getting funding. So, people who are looking at, you know, these green things, we are getting green from the state in the way of funding for this. So, sometimes, the more green in the way of funding that we put in to do more research, we are getting more green and more funding back for it. So, it is a fiscally sound and conservative way to be looking at climate change and, excuse me, and to be looking for the future to help prevent climate change. The other people who are like me, who are looking more for, you know, reducing greenhouse gases and all that stuff, you've already heard from Mrs. Jones about those type of programs. So, the other thing is, then, there are people like me who are just the really, really warm, fuzzy people. I'm 58. My kids are probably not going to have children for a long time. I'm probably not going to be grandmother for a long time. I want to leave my grandchildren in legacy. I'm not going to have much time with them, but I want to leave them a planet that's pretty decent and pretty livable for them. And that's what I'm really doing a lot of this for. So, it's just not my children, but it's your grandchildren as well. So, this is just a really big step. And the thing is, a lot of people want to go, well, is anyone else doing this? Yes. So, if you actually go and Google the word CARP, that really ugly fish will come up. But also, a lot of communities in Massachusetts are doing the Climate and Resiliency Plan. It's very common. Some are also doing what's called a Climate Action Plan. So, this is pretty normal. We're doing what we call a little baby step. We're just kind of looking to see what's out there, what the funding is. So, this is a very fiscally conservative step for Shrewsbury. This is, we're doing a great job for this, and we are doing it the right way. We're not stepping in, we're not becoming Brookline, we're not coming Amherst, we're not becoming Northampton. We're doing this in a fiscally conservative way and looking to see what's out there. So, I really do ask everyone to vote for this. The other thing is Selco. We have this great advantage with having a municipal light plant, and they have done a lot of research on this, and they have really, you know, surveyed people, and their residents want this. And then Selco has a lot of programs in place that can help us and also work with the community and with the rest of Massachusetts. So, again, I do ask everyone to support this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Gentleman up back had raised his hand. Yes, sir.
Milin Kanitkar, Precinct 9. I think this is a great initiative. I would definitely recommend that, but I, just for my own clarification, I just want to know, how is this complementing the Selco's 2032 net-zero plan?
Mr. Mizikah?
So, I think it's really important to think about a community that doesn't have the benefit of having its own municipal light plant, to answer that question. So, I see Selco's commitment to the community and its customers of being carbon-free by 2032 kind of as a warm blanket. That helps us understand that as we make changes in the municipal government, if we're moving towards electrification, then we're going to be green in those investments. Where if you were with an investor-owned utility like National Grid or Eversource, even if you went to electrification, that electricity could still be produced by non-carbon-free sources. So, Selco is a clear enabler and a cost saver and a true partner through their 2032 initiative as we undertake a project like this.
Thank you. Mr. Cray?
Bob Cray, again, from Precinct 2. I think it's probably a pretty good place to have some diversity of opinion. So, I'm standing here, representing Precinct 2, to urge people to vote against spending more money and collecting more power in the hands of a few appointed people who will never hear from again, except when they want to add more employees onto the town budget. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Further comments or questions with reference to Article 27? Yes, Mr. Lopamato?
Mike Lopamato, Precinct 6. Mr. Mizikah, I just wanted to confirm from what you said, if I understand correctly, there is no intent that this committee or the town would be looking to mandate that residents do anything regarding energy conservation or, you know, net-zero, et cetera, et cetera?
100%, yes.
Okay. The only reason I ask that to clarify is because I'm in the construction industry, and I know the state is pushing very hard to update building codes to get to net-zero with houses. And there are many, many restrictions in the current building code as far as, you know, things you have to provide for in a new house with, for example, charging stations. You don't have to put one in, but you have to allow enough, a big enough electrical service to do it. You have to allow areas on the roofs of the houses to potentially put in solar panels. Things such as this, which it's been demonstrated have just significantly added costs to people who want to build new homes. You also, you cannot heat a new home with oil because the furnaces aren't efficient enough. So, basically, you're restricted to electric or gas. And one of the things I'd just like to say is that, yes, climate change is real, there's no question about it, and we have to move towards things, but I think we have to be cautious in the fact that the electricity has to come from somewhere. And most of the power generating plants at this point in time and into the foreseeable future are sourced by carbon-based fuels. And in order to get the electricity, we have to accept the fact that that needs to happen. We saw some horrible things happen in Texas within the past year or two where they didn't have sufficient backup source systems because they depended too much on alternate sources. So, I just think we have to follow the technology as it develops and work with it to, in a timely manner, get that, and not try to jump too far ahead and put ourselves in a difficult position.
Thank you, sir. Further comments or questions? Anybody new who hasn't asked a question in today's Town Meeting? Gentleman right there in the aisle.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kevin McLaughlin, Precinct 10. With all due respect to the gentleman who just spoke before me, the crisis in Texas, there were a few factors at play. Chiefly, their infrastructure was not prepared for a weather event, anything close to that. Why not? Because that's not normal. It's not normal because that storm system that absolutely obliterated Texas's ability to operate was a result of climate change. I don't think there's any question about it. So, by doing nothing, that's not a plan. I totally respect differences of opinion, and I think that debate should happen, but by simply saying, "Vote no, let's not add to government, let's do nothing," that's not a plan, frankly. So, if you have an opinion about what to do about it, then we'd love to hear it. Thank you.
Further comments and questions with direct reference to 27? Article 27, Funding a Climate Action and Resiliency Plan. Mr. Manella?
Move question, moderator. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to move the question. This is not subject to debate. We'll immediately go to a vote. We're discussing Article 27. Motion has been made to move the question. All those in favor of moving the question shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
The motion passes to move the question. We're now back to Article 27. All those in favor of Article 27 shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
It passes. Article 28.
Move the printed motion under Article 28.
Second.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends by unanimous eight to zero vote, passage of Article 28.
Mr. Mizikah?
As part of the town's continued efforts to revitalize the town center, work strategically to holistically identify challenges and develop solutions to be responsive to residents, this project would provide for a comprehensive investigation into the mobility challenges and opportunities in the town center area. The $230,000 will primary fund the investigation by traffic engineers and related disciplines to undertake this investigation and develop and propose potential solutions. Should that work be completed and sufficient funds remain available, they would be invested into mitigating the challenges and exploiting any opportunities that are presented.
Comments or questions with reference to Article 28? Yes, Ms. Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Moira Miller, Precinct 1, and a member of the Shrewsbury Town Center Association. Many of you may know that the Town Center Association has been working very hard to make the town center a place that is more vibrant and a destination for people to better come to enjoy, either as individuals or as businesses, out with their families, whatever. Of course, doing things to bring people to the town center means that we're increasing things like traffic, and that certainly is a concern. And usually, we get these types of studies that are specific to residential or business developments. This is an opportunity to take a look at traffic as well as more comprehensive include bikes and walking, ways again to make our town center a place that people want to come to, not only because there are things there for them to do, but because they feel comfortable with access and how they get there. I think this is money that will be well-spent for taxpayers, and I would encourage our Town Meeting members to please support this study.
Thank you. Further comments or questions with reference to Article 28? Not hearing or seeing any, we'll call the vote. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. Almost felt unanimous, almost. Article 29, is the Community Preservation Committee financials. Mr. DePaulo?
I move the printed motion under Article 29.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends by a unanimous eight to zero vote, passage of Article 29.
Prior to handing it off to Mr. Mizikah, I will just report to the Town Meeting that I'm in, been handed an April 12 communique from the Community Preservation Act indicating they held a public meeting regarding Article 29 and the appropriations or reserves contained within. And the Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of Article 29. Mr. Mizikah?
So, Town Meeting members, over the coming years, you'll become very familiar with this article as it'll be a centerpiece of our financial operations since we are now a Community Preservation Act community. This year will be a little bit unique in that we are doing core financial work for CPA funds for both fiscal year '22 and fiscal year '23. In future years, we'll only be looking forward to the upcoming year, so next year, we'll just consider fiscal year '24. What we are doing here is setting funds aside, not spending them for any particular purposes, but the statute requires us to set funds aside for particular purposes, which are identified on Pages 41 and, excuse me, 42 within the motion. So, the percentages that you see within the motion are those statutory set-asides. So, we're just basically beginning to build our funding and future reserves for projects that will be potentially proposed by residents, town departments, and others, considered by the Community Preservation Committee, and then ultimately voted on for appropriation by Town Meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikah. Comments or questions regarding Article 29? Mr. Segalnek?
I guess what I heard--
Could you please identify yourself, John, in Precinct?
John Segalnek, Precinct 2, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I guess what I heard was that there's a requirement to set funds aside, and my question is specifically on the administration expenses. Basically, there's no other committee that ever has this kind of money for administration expenses. So, the question I guess I have is, the way the article reads, once we approve these funds for administration expenses, does that mean the committee can spend this $100,000 on anything they desire because it's kind of given to them? As opposed to on the other categories, they have to come back to the Town Meeting? This article doesn't say that they got to come back to the Town Meeting for spending any administrative expenses.
Mr. Mizikah?
Perhaps I need to check with council, but yes, that is my understanding, that given the unique nature of the Community Preservation Act, that these funds are set aside for administrative support and project support purposes as the CPC investigates projects and, you know, is supported perhaps at their meetings to create minutes and things like that. So, if the funds aren't expensed, they would ultimately roll back into the general budgeted reserve, but yes, you are appropriating them for a future use, and they don't have to come back.
It's subject to the appropriation of Town Meeting, John.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay? That's, I just talked to council, that's what I was doing.
But we're appropriating it right now.
We're appropriating it now? Okay, Steve, go ahead.
Look, just-- Sorry, is this on?
Yes.
Thank you. Stephen Madouse, Town Council, to confirm the Town Manager's answer. The statutory provision allows for an appropriation of the funds for administrative and operating expenses of the Community Preservation Committee, but it must be appropriated by the legislative body by Town Meeting. So, it is a permissible expense. It will be available for that purpose if you so vote.
Further comments or questions with reference to this article? Anyone new? Mr. Molina?
Jason Molina, Precinct 1, but I'm also the chairperson of the Community Preservation Committee. So, I think I would, in this matter, I will speak on behalf of the committee. I just want to make a clarification that, as to Mr. Segalnek's point here about the amount of the administrative expenses, it is not $100,000, it is $52,310 moving into next year, fiscal year '23. So, we're not, that's not, you don't add them together, it is only $52,310. But it is correct that it is up to that amount available for administrative purposes of the committee. It is our goal as committee members to not spend money where it doesn't need to be spent. The money should be used specifically for giving back to the community. That's what the Community Preservation Act was all about, is providing additional quality of life projects for the benefit of the public. So, these expenditures would be, are allowable for things such as, I think, legal counsel and reviewing citizen requests for projects throughout community, or whether it be feasibility studies to make sure that things actually happen that are legal. But again, that'll be things that we will obviously look with Town Counsel to make sure that it is appropriate uses of those funds. So, this is not a slush fund for taking trips down to the casino, okay? This is specifically for the benefit of our community and for doing the business of the Community Preservation Committee to review community requested projects. Thank you.
Thank you very much. John, did you have a follow-up?
Yeah, in regards--
Could you please re-identify yourself, John?
John Segalnek, Precinct 2. In regards to-- In regards to the $100,000 I mentioned, he said it was $52,310, but that was only for FY '23. If you look for FY '22 and '23, it's over $100,000. And I guess I'm still...
Just a second, John. Mr. Mizikar has an answer.
Just, so they lose the ability to use that at the end of the fiscal year? That's why this is an odd year. So at the end of the year, it doesn't continue to build this administrative fund. If it's not used, it goes away into the general reserve.
Thank you.
Okay, the article doesn't say that, though, so I guess that's where I was going to...
Confused. State finance law would trump that matter, John. Further comments or questions regarding this referenced article, Article 29? This requires a majority vote. All those in favor of Article 29 shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. It passes. We're now moving into a series of amended, excuse me, to amend the zoning bylaws. We'll go each one individually. These require a two-thirds vote. We will have Article 30, Mr. DePaolo.
I move the printed motion under Article 30.
Second.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee, by a unanimous seven to zero vote, recommends passage of Article 30.
Thank you. And I've been handed a communique dated May 5, 2022, from the Planning Board's chairman indicating that they held a public hearings and voted unanimously in favor of Article 30. Mr. Mizikar, a brief before handing it over to Bernie?
I have nothing, I'll just pass it over to...
Okay. Mr. Cahill?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Town Manager. Thank you also for mentioning that in your town meeting memos, it doesn't actually mention Article 30, I believe, that the town planning board approved, but they did approve that, so that was just a typo. So thank you, Mr. Moderator, for mentioning that. With me, I was going to say this evening, this morning, it feels like this evening, is Rowan McAllister, Assistant Town Planner, who's going to be speaking to Article 30 today.
Great. Thank you, Bernie. Rowan McAllister, Assistant Town Planner. Article 30 is being proposed to better conform to state statute, specifically pertaining to when a special permit is required to alter a pre-existing non-conforming single or two-family structure. So with the assistance of town council, we have inserted language primarily in Section C that identifies that a special permit will no longer be needed in order to alter a pre-existing non-conforming single or two-family dwelling, as long as that proposed alteration does not increase the nature of the nonconformity. So you might be wondering what this means. The items 1 through 4 tries to provide four different scenarios that will no longer require special permit. I believe in your packets, we've included a couple sample plot plans to also further identify these four scenarios that will no longer require special permits from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Thank you.
Thank you. As we enter the world of zoning, I would just remind town meeting members, you may find it interesting to grab the packet dated May 5 from the manager, in which you will find some of the same information, but some supplementary information as well. Comments or questions with respect to Article 30? I'm not hearing or seeing any. Therefore, we will move to a vote. It's a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article 30 shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nearly unanimous. Article 31, Mr. DePaolo.
I move the printed motion under Article 31.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends by a unanimous seven to zero vote, passage of Article 31.
I will note that in my hand, I have a communication from Steve Boulay, Chairman of the Shrewsbury Planning Board, indicating that they held appropriate public hearings and voted unanimously in favor of this article. Mr. Cahill?
I swear that keeps going on. Article 31 is, would require slopes, creating or disturbing any slope with a 50% grade 10 feet or higher to be subject to site plan approval. The reason for this is to protect businesses and homes, existing and future ones, from failures of slopes, but also things like water changes, right? If there's a change in a slope, oftentimes stormwater can change, and if there's no review, that means flooded basements, it means washed-out driveways. So what this would do is, it's intended to protect residents and business owners in
Thank you very much. Comments or questions regarding this article? Article 31, way up, Mr. Budenhagen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, I just have one...
Closer to your mouth, Gene.
One quick question.
Could you identify yourself, Gene?
Gene Budenhagen, Precinct One. One of the largest projects, residential projects in his town is about to take place, if you've been following the planning and the conservation. And in reference to slopes, they're going to slice and cut 30 to 50 feet down, clear-cut 50 acres of land. And I'm just wondering, is it too late now for the planning department to have input on these slopes?
Thank you for your question. No, it's not, because it's underneath a site plan approval already, so it's a part of the site plan. And in fact, those slopes have actually already gone out to a peer reviewer for their review.
One follow-up?
Certainly.
Is the developer going to pay for the peer review?
Yes, they do, under a site plan.
Thank you. Further questions on Article 31? Further comments or questions on Article 31? I'm not seeing this. Requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article 31 shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. Motion passes. We now move to Article 32, for which there will be a substitute motion added due to a scribbler's error. Mr. DePaolo.
I move the substitute motion under Article 32 on the pink sheet.
Second.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends by a unanimous five to zero vote, passage of Article 32.
I will note that I have a communique dated May 5 from Stephen Boulay, Chairman of the Planning Board, indicating that public hearings were held and the board was unanimous in their support of this article. Mr. Cahill?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So Article 32, just the change that you're seeing before you today on the pink piece of paper is, it accidentally referenced Section 4B1, it should say Section 2, so that was the change, if you were wondering.
Everyone clear on that?
Did everyone?
Okay. Go ahead, Bernie.
Okay. So what Article 32 would do would allow the town clerk to make numerical and alphanumeric changes to the zoning bylaw without having to come back here for a two-thirds vote. So what that means is, what we've been found over the years, is that over the decades, as we've had all these, you know, zoning changes since 1967, sometimes numbers get, they're off, right? Table of contents don't line up. It'll say, you know, page 60 for site plan approval, you go to page 60, it's actually on page 75. This would allow the town clerk to make those corrections. There is oversight, of course. It would have to go through consultation with town council, and the town clerk would have to make a historical note of it, of when that change was made and what was made. But the idea is to not have to come back for a two-thirds vote to make those types of corrections.
Thank you. Comments or questions regarding the substitute motion as offered under Article 32? I'm not seeing or hearing any. I'll therefore call the vote. This is a two-thirds. All those in favor of the substitute motion offered under Article 32 shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. Motion carries. We move to Article number 33, Mr. DePaolo.
I move the printed motion under Article 33.
Second.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends by a unanimous seven to zero vote, passage of Article 33.
And I will simply advise town meeting that I have in my hand a May 5 communique from Stephen Boulay, Chairman of the Planning Board, indicating that they held their public hearings and voted unanimously in favor of this article. Mr. Cahill?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 33 is regarding common driveways. It might look a little more complicated than it really is. What this one does is, it limits residential common driveways to only be serviced by a total of four units. So 17 or so years ago, the limit was put on three lots. This is now putting on a total number of units across those three lots that can use that common driveway. The second part, so the rest of it is clarification, we just kind of broke out residential and commercial and industrial, just to make it easier to read. The second part is, we've added a section, or proposing to add a section, that common driveways may not cross over commercial and industrial zones, uh, sorry, excuse me, other way around, may not cross over residential zones to get to a commercial industrial zone, so you wouldn't have trucks going through next to your house to service an industrial or commercial facility.
Thank you. Comments or questions regarding Article 33? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, okay. Diana Bowley, Precinct Four. You know, I think we've had a lot of discussion, at least I've heard a lot of discussion about affordable housing in Shrewsbury, and I'm wondering if this will have a detrimental effect on the ability to bring in affordable housing in Shrewsbury.
Bernie, thoughts?
I shouldn't think so. This is a question of access, really, not a question of changing multifamily districts or anything, so I don't think it would. The thing is, is the reason this is being proposed is because the regulations for common driveways are about one page. I brought, well, I brought them somewhere. They're about this thick, the regulations for subdivision roads, and what we're finding is that developers, what they're doing is, they're looking to get around those subdivision regulations by making common driveways instead of making subdivision roads. So really, it's kind of a matter of infrastructure. They're not providing the safety and the adequate standards of a road. They're trying to get away with a driveway, which is like 18 feet wide. So if we start getting into like 10 or 12 units serving an 18-foot-wide driveway, there's going to be issues. But anyways, what your question was about affordable housing, I don't think it will. I don't see that being an issue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Comments or questions with reference to Article 33? I'm not seeing or hearing any. Therefore, we'll call the vote. All those in favor of Article 33 on a two-thirds vote shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. The ayes have it. Article 34, Mr. DePaolo.
I move the printed motion under Article 34.
Second.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee unanimously by a seven to zero vote recommends passage of Article 34.
In my hand, I have a communique dated May 5 from Stephen Boulay, Chairman of the Planning Board, indicating a unanimous vote was held after the appropriate public hearings regarding Article 34. Mr. Cahill?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This one, I believe, is pretty straightforward. Pretty much what it adds is a sentence at the end of what we already have for a green strip between lots. This would be to take away the requirement in the limited industrial zone between, in limited industrial uses only, to have that five-foot strip. The zoning enforcement officer is finding that it is challenging to enforce, and we're finding that it's not necessarily necessary, and as you can see in your exhibit pages, there are some examples, it's mostly down on Route 20. What we're seeing for the functioning of some of these businesses, that it's not necessary. So that's pretty much it in a nutshell.
Thank you, Mr. Cahill. Comments or questions regarding Article 34? Not hearing or seeing any. We will move to a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article 34 shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. The ayes have it. Article 35, Mr. DePaolo.
I move the printed motion under Article 35.
Second.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee, by a unanimous seven to zero vote, recommends passage of Article 35.
Thank you. In my hand, I have a communique dated May 5, 2022, from Stephen Boulay, indicating the planning board voted unanimously in favor of this article after the appropriate public hearings. Mr. Cahill?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is Article 35. There's two parts to it. The first part would be to allow the planning board to grant by special permit buildings with heights greater than 50 feet up to 75 feet. The other one would also provide the board with the power to, through special permit, to allow unloading at the front of a building in the limited industrial zoning district. For those of you who aren't familiar, new town meeting members or what have you, special permits allow the planning board to offer unfriendly conditions in their decisions. In other words, not negotiated, they can just put them in there if they feel they're necessary. They can also deny an application under a special permit, as long as it's shown that they believe that it's detrimental to the neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Cahill. With reference to Article 35, are there any comments or questions?
Oh, Mr. Moderator, I'm sorry, I just wanted to add one more thing.
Please.
With us today are representatives from GFI Properties, the petitioner for this article, so if there are any industry-related questions, we're going to probably go over to them to answer those.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions with reference to Article 35? Yes, Krista.
Krista, if you pray, Precinct One, could you just remind town meeting and viewers at home exactly what is included in the limited industrial? Because my understanding, this could potentially impact residential areas as well, if I'm correct.
Do you mean like the limited industrial, like map, the zoning map?
Just what types of, I believe, businesses that could be included, if I'm understanding the terminology?
Yep, so things like light manufacturing, robotics, certain types of manufacturing of medical equipment, but then also you have logistics and warehousing, so distribution and warehousing is also a big one.
Further questions and comments? Ms. Fritz.
Sandra Fritz, Precinct Nine, I just have a question and a comment. It seems like these are two separate kind of issues and decisions to make, and I'm just wondering, is there any reason why they were bundled together in this one warrant article?
I don't think there was a particular reason, other than the petitioner wanted to have them together.
Okay, thank you. The comment I have on this one is, Precinct Nine, we do have one of these proposed parcels, 440 Hartford Turnpike, and I think it went before the planning board in February to talk about the loading in the front, which makes sense for that particular parcel. And the reason I say that is, it abuts a neighborhood, and I know the limited industrial zone, and we're kind of patchworked around our town for it, it's not in one area. So I think as we move forward with these types of decisions, we have to think about who abuts those, because it is a patchwork, and it, yes, there's comments about it's going to bring revenue in, we understand that, but we also have to be fair to those neighbors and look at what is appropriate for them, because they do butt a neighborhood. So that's just my comment on this article. Thank you.
Bernie, could you just clarify that point of notification? If somebody submits under a special permit, what are the notification practices?
Right, so it butters within 300 feet of the property line, be notified of a project. The project you're referring to is 440 Hartford Turnpike. That was actually the Zoning Board of Appeals. They were looking for a variance, because right now, it's not allowed in the zoning bylaw to put the loading in the front. And they actually, with my understanding and from watching the public hearing, with the support of the neighbors, put that loading in the front to keep the noise and the beeping and all that away from the residential neighborhood.
Further comments or questions with reference to this article, Article 35, the gentleman way up with the mask on, you? Hold on, please identify yourself once the microphone gets to you.
Phil Blumberg, Precinct Nine. Yeah, I'm also, we also live right near Hartford Turnpike, and I would just like to say that, in my opinion, this would have a detrimental effect to those residents. I think I've seen a lot of development in that area, and I don't think there's a need for taller, taller buildings in that area. So, thank you.
Certainly, thank you. Further comments or questions? Ms. Gunnett.
Dating Gunnett, Precinct Two, I did watch the presentation by the proponent here. Can you just explain where the limited business district is for everybody watching here? And also, 75 feet is pretty high. We dealt with this down at Fair Lawn when they wanted to put in, I believe, a four-story. It's pretty imposing when you're the neighbors. It's pretty imposing when you're the neighbors. We understand living as in a butter to Route Nine. You know, we, we expect some challenges. We know where we live. We know where we moved into, I mean, actually, we didn't move in. We've lived there our entire lives. We understand the challenges living there and what we expect. But when you're living amongst a one-story building and all of a sudden somebody wants to put in a four-story building, that's very, very different. Now, when the town has a bylaw of fifty feet currently, and they want to change it to seventy-five feet, and yes, the business now is automation, and we need to keep up with the times, but fifty to seventy-five feet, that's big. That's huge. So people need to think about this. They need to think about their neighbors. I understand Route 20, but these people also have their houses there. They have their lives there. They also, they have a lot of stuff going on down there. They have apartment complexes coming in. They have all kinds of stuff coming in. Do we really want them? I understand that there are certain places they're going to go in. They're going to come in by right, special permits. We've dealt with special permits. I appreciate the Planning Board. I appreciate the ZBA. I don't always agree with their decisions and whatnot, but we have to accept them. But we really have to stop, pause, and understand what this decision is going to do for our town. These are huge buildings. Seventy-five feet is really, really big. I don't know if you can give us a reference as to what our, one of our tallest buildings in town is, and then let people understand what we're going to be looking at. So if you could just give us an overview of which, which sections we're looking at so that people can understand it. Thanks.
That's a lot to unpack, but I'll take it in pieces. The first one is, it's not the limited business district. I just want to make that very clear. No, no, it's okay. It's zoning. Limited industrials, so it's mostly along Route 20, and it's also the Worcester Sand, the old Worcester Sand and Gravel site to the northwest, plus another parcel, 234 Holden Street, if I'm not mistaken, also across from Worcester Sand and Gravel. So that's most of the limited industrial district. As for height reference, well, first, let me say, when I first saw a draft of this, there was no limit on the height. And I said, that's not going to fly. That's not acceptable. So what the planning department did is we actually researched around Massachusetts and said, what are other towns doing? Let's take a look. And pretty much, it's everything from about fifty-five feet to one hundred and ten feet. I believe it's in Charleston. So we thought, you know, to take the middle of that, the median of that, and that we thought was reasonable proposal. And we brought that back to the proponent, and they agreed to that. So just want to understand how we got there, that originally it was like, sky's the limit. And I was also like, yeah, that's not going to work. So then, secondly, what's, what is, let's say, what's a hundred feet? So if anyone's familiar with the, the towers behind Trader Joe's up on the hill, take the hill away, it's a hundred feet to the top. So seventy-five feet is three-quarters of that tower.
Further questions or comments with reference to Article 35? Yes. I'm sorry. One second. I had indicated to a member over here that I would call on her, yeah, there she is, please.
Lisa Steele, Precinct Six. I was just curious, given the height, if that's going to pose any additional challenges or expenses to the fire department to be able to reach those higher buildings.
Thank you.
That's a good question. Chief Vona's here.
Shouldn't add any, Chief Vona, Fire Department, shouldn't add any additional costs to the department. We currently have a ladder tower that is a hundred and two feet, and it was designed to get to the roof of the hundred-foot tower Bernie just spoke of on, at 36 North Quinsig. So we don't see any additional, you know, everyday expense for the fire department. Obviously, if these buildings ever caught fire, we'd be calling in additional resources from the city of Worcester and our surrounding communities that we have mutual aid agreements with. So it's not something that we couldn't handle.
Chief, could you just reassure folks, I think I'm correct in indicating that such a structure would be sprinkled?
Yes, it would, by statute.
Thank you very much. Just one second, the manager would like to add something.
So I just wanted to, to make sure that I underscore Mr. Cahill's response to Ms. Gunnett's question, is that this is not the limited business district. It doesn't impact properties along Route Nine. It's a much more limited zoning district within our community. It was specifically set aside for limited industrial processes. And it may seem minor, but it's vastly different in both the area of zone district that this would be permissible in, and the setbacks in abutting uses that are permitted against a limited business zone versus a limited industrial zone. The limited industrial zone would be more favorable to the abutters in requiring those setbacks. And I, and I also just want to underscore that the intent behind this initiative, and perhaps at the moderator's discretion, we could, we could have the, the proponents speak a little bit about this. This is an economic development initiative for the town. We all know, and a lot of people point out, that Shrewsbury's percentage of commercial industrial property does not rival our neighbor communities. Many communities have greater percentages of commercial industrial assets within their community than we do in Shrewsbury. And we all know that the more businesses that are contributing to taxes, that provides some offset to residential properties. So as we consider economic development initiatives and try to remain attractive, we see the need to bring this forward for town meetings' consideration. All I'm simply putting out there is, as we try to be attractive in 2022 and beyond to businesses, there are some initiatives that we need to undertake from a zoning standpoint to continue our economic competitiveness and continue to push that commercial industrial property value within the community upwards. So that's what this initiative is about. It's about putting in play more modern opportunities for people to invest in us. Thank you.
Thank you. Right up in front of me, please.
Milinkanitkar, Precinct Nine. I have just a curious question, you know. I just want to know what kind of industries were turned away in absence of this? And, you know, I understand based on, you know, town managers' just explanation that, you know, we are trying to increase our tax base with industrial and commercial attractiveness compared to other towns. So just curious about it. Do we have that data? And if yes, you know, how can we get that?
Mr. Cahill.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I believe, I'm going to actually defer to the industry experts on this, answering this question about attracting higher-end businesses. So, Mr. Moderator, with your permission, I would like to call down Representatives of GFI to speak.
Certainly. Mr. Donahue.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you, town meeting members, for the opportunity. My name is Mark Donahue. I represent GFI Partners. GFI Partners owns four separate tracts of limited industrial zoning property in the town of Shrewsbury. It is in the process of, or has developed, tens of millions of square feet of industrial-type land, and is very active in that marketplace. The particular product that is being discussed here, and the reason why we seek your approval to allow the Planning Board, in the right case, to grant a special permit, is the change, particularly in the logistics field and in the research fields that are combined with manufacturing, to have greater height and talk in terms of cubic feet of a building instead of square footage, to be able to take care, take advantage of development of technology and robotics in those particular industries. It doesn't mean that the entire building is that height. It can be sections of the building for particular purposes, nor does it mean it's the entire facade of the building, because it's of good building practice to make sure that the center of the building is higher in order to provide for positive drainage for those particular sections. So what this is, is a greater demand for that ability, particularly in the logistics field, to be able to maximize the utilization of the buildings by being able to go up and use multiple levels. This provides the opportunity to do it, but only to do it if it's in the right place and appropriate for the surrounding properties. And that's what the special permit process allows. It only allows it on a supermajority of four out of five of the Planning Board members. It is a process GFI has been through successfully in other communities, and we only ask for the opportunity to do it here in Shrewsbury. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments and questions with reference to Article 35? Yes.
Bridget Hilton, Precinct Seven. We talked a little bit when we were reviewing some of the articles as they relate to the schools, about the sort of bifurcated nature of our town along north and south side, and how that is reflected in tax value, affordability of housing, and equity. And I am a little bit concerned, given that most of the industrial activity in town is located in that lower-income side of town, that what we're going to result in is some sort of environmental discrimination, where the quality of life for residents living in that part of town is going to be less than it is for people who live in neighborhoods like mine. And I just want to know that this is a consideration that has been discussed and talked about, and for my fellow town meeting members to keep in mind. As we look to the future of Shrewsbury and wanting to create a place where people want to live that's equitable, where all students can live and thrive, increasing industrial capacity in neighborhoods where children are living has been proven, in many cases around the country, to have detrimental effects on their academic success and health outcomes. So that's something that I think we need to consider very carefully when we look at expanding the ability of industrial activity in that part of town.
Thank you. Further comments or questions with regard to Article 35? Ms. Hollenbach.
Melissa Hollenbach, Precinct Nine. Again, I live along Route 20. And again, we know we live along Route 20 in that whole area there. And I've been gently nudging my neighbors and other people in the area that we need to consider having a Route 20 coalition or a type of a group that we start monitoring and guiding this together. I'm also a proponent of smart growth, and I do know that we're currently an EJ community designated by the state. We also have a lot of potential, but we also need to get ahead of this, my fellow residents of the area. We also have issues with potential and current pollution, because we're also going to be seeing another UPS facility down there. But we're also near a train station. We're all seeing Route 20 going to be coming in. We have a really good chance to create a really vibrant community down there, but we kind of need to work with the, you know, the GBIs, and we need to work the facilities to bring in good jobs with benefits. We need to be able to provide good housing, affordable housing. We need to be able to work with the city of Shrewsbury, and we need to work with the current residents. So, you know, I'm kind of torn. Is this good? Is this bad? I don't know, because we need to really get together as a grassroots effort, a community effort, a state effort, a business effort, because we need the jobs, we need the education, we need the infrastructure, we need all this stuff. So, I'm not sure. And I do understand that robotics need to be a certain height. Ms. Vedder's son is, you know, getting a PhD, I believe, in robotics. So, you know, they have an understanding of the whole robotics, you know, industry and that kind of thing. So it's, it's tough. So I am going to vote yes, because I do understand, but I also really want people to start getting involved. You know, you know, you can't just say, oh, gee, I didn't know, but, you know, despite the fact that there have been three million meetings about it, or it's been on TV. You got to get off your, you know, your couch, and you got to vote. You got to say things, and not three weeks after the fact. So we need to get ahead of these things, and we need to do it, and we need to kind of poke people, and we need to do it together and go to these, I hate to say it really boring, planning meetings and all this stuff, but we need to do this, because we have a really great chance to turn Route 20 not just into an industrial park with more cars roaming by. It can be a really vital community. The 20, the Route 20 plan is already planning for sidewalks. You know, we've got CPA money coming, and the parks that we have already, turning them into really nice jewel parks. You know, using more money down there for creating new parks. You know, so we've got it, but we got to do it. We can't wait for the town to do it. We got to start poking them, saying this is what we want. So I probably will vote for a yes for it, but, you know, we got to start demanding more and getting involved. Sorry. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Further comments and questions regarding Article 35? PETA.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Peter Collins, Precinct Four. My concern would, this, you know, article is kind of an enclosed neighborhood and, you know, kind of adding on to the previous two speakers. Where, you know, one of these limited industrial zones are, is right across from the drive-in project, which we just are going through right now, that's going to put in a commercial component with Market Basket, thankfully, a Starbucks, and some other things, 250 units. There's a housing project going on up the street from there. So we're getting to the, to the question of how, you know, how much can the pipe through 20 at that point take? So if we start putting up big industrial, you know, facilities along Route Nine, which is, you know, is zone industrial right across the street from this, from that project, from the Edgemere Crossing project, and it's getting to the point where, you know, how many cars and trucks and, and those types of things are we going to be able to jam up and down there? You know, Route 20 was a vibrant trucking road in the 30s. You know, it's kind of got old and tired from that point of it. And, you know, I'm going to just move away from what some of the other things that, you know, kind of depict that end of town as kind of like the poor side of town. You know, we're on Lakewood Siggam, and a lot of the properties down there that we're talking about around this particular property, including the Edgemere Crossing, is waterfront, which is at a premium. And it's, you know, the houses that are being redone in that, in that area down there, in Precinct Four and Precinct Three, Precinct Two, multimillion-dollar homes. And, you know, there's a, and the Edgemere itself. And I agree that, I like the sidewalks that are going in. I like the, I guess, Lakeway District Plan on that side of town. I think that's going to be a good thing. We're sad about the diner and some of the other historical things that are leaving the, the neighborhood. But that all said, you know, this neighborhood is on the rise, and it's getting better and better and better all the time. And, you know, these types of projects kind of stunt that. So that's what I'd ask for consideration that we're, you know, and I understand it's a special permit, and you got to have permission. The other concern I have in this too is also the pollution running off these types of facilities into the lake. We have essentially a junkyard, when they move lobbies over to there, that's a hundred and fifty feet from the water. And, you know, that, if you've ever walked around in a place like that, it's dirty. You know, there's, there's oil and all kinds of things. By the nature of what they do, they're bringing in broken vehicles and, you know, that have holes and cracks, and they leak. So these are the types of things that we're concerned about, you know, on our end of town, that we're not increasing pollution, increasing traffic to where it gets to the point where it's just unmanageable and, you know, to, to protect our property values. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments or questions with regard to this? Donna O'Connor?
Donna, Precinct Two. We're always looking to find ways to bring revenue to the town. In order to do that, you have to find places where the construction can take place. So the Worcester Sand and Gravel property is one prime location where I do not believe that a seventy-five-foot-high building on that property is detrimental. And it also has easy access to the highways. Route 20 is, is, has been there. It's been a trucking road for years. We're finally seeing growth there. That's one of the last places we have to look to bring revenue to this town. So we have to be smart about what we pick for projects, and we have to rely on the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Planning Board to protect neighborhoods. So it's their responsibility to protect a neighborhood. So if a seventy-five-foot building doesn't make sense in that area, they need to stop that. And that's part of this article.
Thank you. Further comments or questions from those who have not contributed to date? Yes, right up in front of me. Good morning. Good afternoon, I mean.
Melanie Petrucci, Precinct One. When I heard the term robotics that rang a bell, we need to, this could be a We need to, this could be a great opportunity for those students at the high school that need internships and access to places local that can provide some of that technical experience that the high school is unable to provide and that they might be able to get at Assabet but can't, because we can't go to Assabet. So, look at it from that standpoint, that it could become an opportunity for our kids and add it, obviously, to piggyback on what Ms. O'Connor said, we need to be welcoming of economic opportunities as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Dennis?
Dennis O'Connell, Precinct 7. I've been in town for almost 30 years, and we've had a debate in this town since then about residential versus commercial. And we've definitely ramped up the residential. I can tell you, we put buildings in my backyard that are residential homes, but probably shouldn't have gone there. I think what we need to do is, this special permit package, we need to be welcoming to some of the commercial properties that want to come into town. Obviously, they need to fit, and that should go through the Planning Board, the Zoning Board. But I think this is a good thing to do. If we want to start moving towards commercial, we have to start welcoming in commercial properties. The 75-foot height for some of the properties they're looking at doing will actually make them Class A buildings versus Class B or C buildings, which will increase the revenue for those buildings in that small park. Do we put things in someone's backyard? Hopefully not, and that's why it's by special permit. So, I support this article.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who has not spoken yet? Do we have any first-timers? Yes.
Hi, Martha Gannon, Precinct 8. I just have a question about the limited industrial zoning district. How is that determined and who determines that? And can that be changed to, say, we want to put in more industrial things, can we just pick a spot? Or can it be changed and increased?
Yes, is the quick answer. Who creates these zoning districts? So, this one goes back decades. The process for changing zoning is exactly what we're doing here this evening. So, it comes to the selectmen. The selectmen defer it to the Planning Board, which starts a public hearing process, goes through that public hearing process. I present to the Finance Committee, I present to the Board of Selectmen. As you heard this evening, they had recommendation votes, and then it comes to all of you here at Town Meeting for a two-thirds vote to change the zoning district. So, the process would be the same. If you want to expand it, you want to shrink it, you want to add something to it, take something away, that's the process for doing it.
And then, I guess, on the height of the buildings, it would be by project to determine the proper height, but the most it would be was 75 feet?
Right. So, special permit decisions don't create any sort of precedent? They're, the way I like to explain to new Planning Board members is they're special, right? It's all determined on each individual case. So, if they allow it in one spot, it may not be allowed by the Planning Board, and a different one, if they feel it's inappropriate.
Thank you, Mr. DiPaolo.
The limited industrial zoning that we have in town, like most of the other zoning in town, was set years and years ago. And now to try to find other parts of town to create new limited industrial, to spread it out around town, to make it more equitable, as it were, is really not possible, because you need large tracts of land for limited industrial now, and the town's too built out. So, we have what we have. Do we have to use it as limited industrial? No. But these are the spaces that we have. We have to remember that we only have 15% of our town zoned for commercial and limited industrial. So, if we're going to be competitive, we need to do our zoning so that we can attract the Class A businesses, and we need to maximize the value of those properties to help our For a time eternal, this Town Meeting and the residents of the town have complained that we need more commercial industrial to help the residential base pay for the services that we need. So, we have to adapt to the time. We need to definitely stay current with the market. Worcester Sand and Gravel is the primary focus of this. It isn't the only limited industrial space in town, but it's the biggest that's left. We have some other places along Route 20, but Worcester Sand is the place where this is going to benefit us the most. There is a parcel where UPS may go, down by the train station in Grafton. But those are the big areas where this kind of a development would go. As far as the traffic on Route 20, it's absolutely not good, right? We know that. The state has been working for many years on a plan to rebuild Route 20 from Route 9 to Worcester, create two lanes in each direction. Representative Kane, who can speak for herself, will tell you that she's been working hard to secure funds and get the design work done for Route 20. So, Route 20 isn't going to stay the way it is forever, and with business coming in, there's more pressure on the state to invest in Route 20. So, a little bit of the chicken and the egg, but we've found where there's economic development, the state will invest money. I would just, I would just say, we need to take advantages of the opportunities when they come up. And a special permit allows protections for the people, the businesses and the residents around these parcels to make sure that they're not overly burdened by onerous gigantic buildings. We have in the past passed up on opportunities for commercial development in this town, and we saw what happens when we do. So, if we want the commercial industrial tax base, then we need to work with the developers to be able to provide the infrastructure that businesses now are demanding. So, I would encourage everybody to vote for this and support the process with the Planning Board. Thank you.
Ms. Nichols?
My question's pretty much answered, but it really came, I was, it had been about special-
Could you please identify yourself, Deana?
Deana Nichols, Precinct 7. The question had been more specifically, and I think it's already been generally covered by Selectman DiPaolo and someone else earlier. Special permit would, in fact, I agree, we, in dire need of economic development, the special permit would, has some teeth to it, I guess, right? So, it's, it can't be overwritten by lawsuits from a proponent who would say that the regulations, the zoning laws now allow for this? I mean, can you, does this, does a special permit have teeth?
The short answer again for that one is yes, it does. I think I might defer, though, to Town Council on answering, like, the success rate in court and how it stands up in court, but I have yet to see, me personally, have yet to see in my professional career, a court overturn a special permit by a Planning Board.
Would you like an explanation, Ms.? Deana, are you satisfied? Okay, very good, then. Further comments or questions with regard to Article 35? Is there anyone out there who hasn't been heard who wishes to be heard? I'm not, oh, there we go, Krista.
Krista Duprey, Precinct 1. I actually do live around the corner from Worcester Sand and Gravel from Precinct 1, so if this does pass, I highly encourage the Town Meeting members and other residents to pay attention to this, especially due to the impact of traffic, whatever. I don't know what is being proposed in that area. There's also Newton Pond, wildlife, all of the environmental impact, as well as the local residents, and obviously the high school, especially young drivers, as well as people going in and out to that other side of the residential area and even up to Route 70. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments or questions with reference to Article 35? This article requires a two-thirds vote. I don't see anyone. I see one person. Mr. Malina?
Jason Malina, Precinct 1. Is it possible during a special permit to specify that if there's sufficient need requests from the public to kind of screen that particular parcel? Let's say pine trees. Pine trees that will grow up to be 75, 80 feet over a couple decades. But anyways, is that possible to kind of convey that from a public perspective when reviewing, when going to the Planning Board?
Absolutely. That's something the public should bring to the Planning Board's attention, and as I mentioned earlier, the Planning Board can condition that, whether or not the proponent wants it. If they believe that pine trees are the answer for that screening, they can put it in a condition of their decision. The developer or the applicant shall put in X number of pine trees along this property line.
Okay. So, there's, and can you just remind one more time? I mean, we've had a lot of things already, it's very much time, kind of forgetting things. Is there, will there be a notification to the public?
Yes, there is. So, any site plan, any special permit, it's notification to the public, it'll be in the Telegram and Gazette, it will be advertised within 300 feet of a property line radius around the property.
So, those people directly are-
They would all get, they would get actually notifications in the mail.
Okay.
And hopefully word would spread from there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Further comments or questions with reference to Article 35? Not seeing or hearing anyone. This is a two-thirds vote. Article 35. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion passes. We will now move to Article 36, a general bylaw, and I draw your attention to the green sheet of paper as we have a substitute motion due to a scrivener's error. Mr. DiPaolo?
I move the substitute motion under Article 36.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, the substitute motion. The Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends by a unanimous six to zero vote, passage of Article 36.
Mr. Mizikar?
Mr. Moderator and Town Meeting members, this is a proposal to establish a tree bylaw to protect and identify how we will protect and maintain public trees within the town of Shrewsbury. It establishes a forestry commission, requires certain reporting throughout the course of the year. It also puts us in a position to be designated as one of the final things that we would require or that we need to be a Tree City USA. As in your travels, you'll likely see Tree City USA designations in communities, and while it's nice to have the designation, it also comes with external funding and grants that we'd make us, that we would be eligible for with that designation. So, operationally, there's not a lot of changes. We're already doing most of the things that are within, in this bylaw, but codifying it puts us in a position to be a Tree City USA and opens us up to funding. With regards to the substitute motion, as the moderator noted, it was just some typographical errors that were pointed out, and we've made those changes. No substantive changes have been made.
Comments or questions with, back to Article 36? Yes, Mr. Ryan?
Bob Ryan, Precinct 7. I think there might be another scrivener's error, because in the definition under appeals, it says the appeals shall be heard by the hearings officer, but nowhere in the warrant does it define what a hearings officer is. Is that defined elsewhere in the bylaws?
Just one second, Mr. Ryan. I believe we have an answer by Ms. Laz.
Mr. Ryan, I am a hearings officer as determined by this-
Could you, I don't think your mic's on or loud enough.
Mr. Ryan, I am the hearings officer as designated by the Town Manager, under the Town Manager Act.
Okay, so that would apply to this? Okay.
Further comments or questions? Yes, Ms. Deering next, but the, no, hold on. Well, Ms. Deering's up, so we'll go with Ms. Deering and then the lady right behind her.
Martha Deering, Precinct 4. I understand that this applies only to town-owned trees. Is that correct? Is there any way to make this apply so that, a few years ago, we had that gentleman say he was going to build something, and then he just completely cut every tree on the hillside along Route 9? So, is there any way to include something like that? Free cutting like that is gone?
Ms. Deering?
And the other part of that question would be, is it $500 per tree, or would it be that whole act?
Ms. Deering, I believe, but I will yield to the professional staff, I think following that clear cut, the board brought forward a bylaw that deals with that issue.
Oh, good.
So, I think that's been dealt with. Kristin, do you, can you shed more light on that?
Yes, a clear-cutting bylaw was brought into the zoning bylaw several years ago.
Yeah, good, thank you.
I think you had a follow-up, though. Did we answer the follow-up question, the $500 here, square? Okay, very good. Yes?
Hi, Lee Abdella, Precinct 6, and also a board member of the Shrewsbury Town Center Association. I noticed on here that it mentions that, you know, you're not allowed to attach any cable, wire, sign, et cetera, et cetera, to a tree on public property, which the way that I'm reading this would therefore would be a concern with the holiday lighting that the STCA has taken the lead on of fundraising and providing the holiday lights on the Town Common. This would outlaw it in theory. Is there some sort of language, and it doesn't mention on here some sort of exception to it, or application, or process to be exempt from that? And if not, can we do that? Because I can say personally, we, you know, we've seen a lot of folks that those lights have come to mean a lot to people between the last couple of years, so there's-
I think if you see, there's the permanent, I think is the key word, but I will yield to others.
Oh, does it say permanent? It doesn't, I don't know if it says permanent, but, no, it doesn't say permanent. But anyways, so just, there's our two cents.
Well, we would certainly, let me, the manager said that's how they'd interpret it. So, let's hold him to his word-
Okay, so everyone knows our witness, and we'll see you next, the first Saturday in December, okay?
Subsequent Town Meeting, we can revisit it and strike your ad.
No, don't revisit it, we're good.
Very good, then. All right, Article 36. Further comments on, yes, Ms. Miller?
Moira Miller, Precinct 1, and also board member of Shrewsbury Town Center Association. I know the manager, I trust the manager, I just, I, normal procedure would be we would amend this today.
Well, let's amend it today.
And then that's how we would vote.
Too hot to be outside, anyway.
Yeah, and I would like to also reinforce that we, I understand what you're trying to do here, and in no way, when those lights are put up, it's been three years now, there's been no damage. The signs are, the signs that we put up, recognizing donations are attached to the light strings, not to the trees, so just want to reassure people, no damage has been done to any trees in the process.
Are you also offering a formal motion to drop in the word permanent or not permanent?
Yes, I would offer that. So, it shall be unlawful to permanently, would that be the language?
Sure.
Or defer to the attorney? Madouse, or?
Yeah, we'll have a, you will make the motion. Mo has seconded it. Read the language, Mo, regarding the amendment, so that everyone in the hall is square. Reference what section you're putting in, et cetera.
Okay. It's Section 5, Item B. It shall be unlawful for any person, firm, or corporation to attach any permanent, insert permanent, cable, wire, sign, or other, any other object to any street, park, or public tree.
Is everyone clear with that motion to amend? Is there debate on the motion to amend? On the motion to amend, Ms. Hollenback? Go ahead. Wait one second.
Melissa Hollenback, Precinct 9. I understand the light situation, so does this now open up the floodgate for any organization? Let's say, you know, any, let's say the farmer's market. Let's say the farmer's market wants- Let's say the farmer's market wants to put up, I don't know, a cow, a cow temporarily on a tree somewhere that's a town-owned tree, temporarily, that we could do that? Or a real estate agent wants to temporarily, you know what I mean?
I think your point is making, Mr. Mizikar, regarding permission.
So yes, if we should then insert within same, said Section B, shall be unlawful without the permission of the forestry commission, and allow those five individuals to have discretion over any tree attachment on public property.
Yes, counsel, I see you eager to speak.
Just to echo the town manager, Mr. Moderator, it shall be unlawful for any person, firm, or corporation to attach, without authorization from the committee, any permanent cable, wire, sign, or any other object to any street, park, or public tree.
So I think that's a superior blending of the two. Would you agree, Moira?
I do, but in fairness, I don't think it addresses Ms. Hollenback's issue. Her specific concern was to temporary. So for example, I think.
Well, you can't attach anything without doing it.
All right, well, whatever.
Are you correct?
I'm not going to argue that.
Temporary as well?
If she feels it addresses her issue.
Okay, great. Hold on. No, that's fine.
I just wanted to make sure that, you know, if any other group, you know, Girl Scouts wanted to do whatever, that they would have the same right to put whatever, basically what I'm going back to is almost like the banner that used to be in the center of town that Selco put up, that there would be a process for other organizations to affix whatever they wanted temporarily to trees, that one group would have the same access as the Town Center Association for whatever purpose.
So what I will ask the counsel to read again is what I believe deals effectively with your desire for an even-handed process and the other concern that it not be permanent. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, then you would please, Moira, withdraw your motion.
I withdraw my motion.
Very good. Mr. Counsel, would you please read the language as to where it will be inserted and what it reads as?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, under 5B. Currently reads, "It shall be unlawful for any person, firm, or corporation to attach," and then to insert, comma, "without authorization from the committee," which is capitalized as a defined term, comma, "any permanent cable," actually, we could have permanent or temporary, "permanent or temporary cable, wire, sign, or any other object to any street, park, or public tree." Might I add, Mr. Mark, do they want lighting inserted in there as?
Wiring, lighting, yeah. Let's just add it at this point.
Okay.
Okay, now, are the two concerned parties satisfied?
Yes, I would put that motion forward.
Very good. Ms. Miller has offered that motion as read and with lighting by the counsel. Second has been offered by Mr. DePaolo. Is everyone clear on what we're amending? Very good. All those in favor of the amendment shall signify, well, hold on. Wait a second.
I'm sorry to put a hiccup in here. Dave Sargent, precinct two. I prefer that the permanent not be allowed at all, and it just be speaking only to temporary being allowed by the committee. So if you could exchange the language, just so it stipulates that no...
Well, the motion has been made as is. So if, I don't mean to be a wise guy, but if you don't like it, vote no. And then we can always go from there.
Okay.
All right. Motion as offered, the amendment as offered. Is everyone clear on it? Very good. On the motion, all those in favor?
Boy, the border?
Yeah.
Can we debate the motion to amend?
I offered that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were just asking if we were clear or if we understood what it was.
Well, do you want to debate the motion? Go ahead.
I actually do, sorry. And do you need a recommendation from the finance committee on that?
Go ahead.
Yeah, okay. Finance committee, are you all on table with this?
Yes. Very, very, very. The finance committee unanimously recommends by a seven to zero vote, the amendment as presented.
Thank you for keeping us on.
Very good.
All right.
Further comment or question? If not, we're going to call the vote on the amendment. Okay, all those in favor of the amendment as offered, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries. Now on the original substitute motion, all those, further comment on that? Not seeing any. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. We will now move to the bottom of page one, bundle 22, Articles 37, 38, 39, and 40. Mr. DePaolo?
I move the printed motions under Articles 37, 38, 39, 40.
Second.
Finance committee?
The finance committee recommends unanimously by an eight to zero vote, passage of Articles 37 and 38, and by a unanimous seven to zero vote, passage of Articles 39 and 40.
Thank you. Mr. Mizikar?
Mr. Moderator, if we could provide a summary of these changes in general, and then questions may be answered by Principal Assessor Ruth Anderson, who is here with us today. The first individual article, Article 37, establishes a special tax relief fund where individuals may elect to add funds that would be used by a committee that this article also establishes to distribute to residents in need and provide tax relief. Then the remaining three articles really modernize the provisions that were given under the general laws to provide tax abatements and exemptions to individuals for specific purposes, whether those things include the age of the individual and/or some other special status like disability or veterans. So all of these are expanding opportunities for tax abatements and exemptions and providing tax relief.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. Are there any questions or comments regarding bundle 22, Article 37, 38, 39, or 40? Not hearing or seeing any, and these requiring, yes, Ms. Mill, Missy?
Missy Hollenback, precinct nine. Mr. Mizikar, is it too late to actually add in for, you know, all the different options for, you know, low income, to actually add in the pay-as-you-throw bags as well, so that they would be able to get either, you know, a package of free bags or reduced-rate bags as well into this at this point? Or is this something maybe we could do next year? But that's also a burden for low-income elderly and disabled as well.
Mr. Mizikar?
I would suggest that it's not within the ability to do today, but could be considered in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Further comments or questions regarding Articles 37, 38, 39, or 40? I'm not seeing any hands or hearing anyone. Therefore, we'll call the vote for a simple majority. All those in favor of Articles 37, 38, 39, 40, under bundle 22, shall indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous. So on page two, we are now, bundle 23, Articles 41 and 42, those are majority votes. Mr. DePaolo?
I move the printed motion under Article 41 and 42.
Second.
Finance committee?
The finance committee unanimously recommends by an eight to zero vote, passage of Articles 41 and 42.
Thank you. Mr. Mizikar?
So these two articles deal with the pension system. Individuals who work for a certain period of time and achieve a certain age are eligible for a defined pension benefit as municipal employees. That defined pension paid over the lifetime of their retirement currently is subject, only the first $12,000 that individuals received is subject to a cost-of-living increase that is considered and voted annually by the Shrewsbury Retirement Board. Article 41 proposes to increase that base, which is subject to the cost-of-living adjustment, from $12,000 to $14,000. So unlike the social security income benefit that individuals may receive, which the entire payment is subject to a cost-of-living increase, municipal retiree benefits, only a portion of it is subject to a cost-of-living adjustment. The second article also seeks to provide cost-of-living relief to anyone who is disabled retired in the line of duty while working for the town of Shrewsbury. So if an individual was determined to have sustained injuries that prevent them from working, they are allowed to retire and receive a pension. However, without action over time, which we have done in the past, their wages would have been frozen at the time and calculated off of the time when they retired and were disabled, and in some instances, that could be decades. So what we're attempting to do through Article 42 is adjust the base for those disabled retired pensioners to 50% of the current wage of the position that they were retired from. So for instance, if a police officer was disabledly retired in, you know, 2003, currently they're receiving a pension benefit based upon a 2003 patrol officer's salary or their salary at the time, and this would adjust it to 50% of a current patrol officer's salary. Again, trying to ensure those who have received retirement benefits and those who were disabledly retired in the line of duty have cost-of-living adjustments and fair wages in their retirement.
Further questions or comments with regard to bundle 23, Articles 41 and 42? Yes? Hold on, we'll get you a microphone. Right over here, along the wall.
Lisa Bruski, precinct eight. Just a quick question, is that standard in area towns and across the state?
Which part? Which part? Well, I can address both. So municipalities have the ability to adjust the cost-of-living base up to $18,000, and at least 60% of municipal retirement systems have their base at $14,000 or greater, so we're in the minority there. And then, yes, it's, the option under 42 is available to all communities, and this community has adjusted disability retiree benefits two times in the past, in the 1980s and then in 2002, so it's been 20 years since that base has been adjusted for our disabled retirees.
Further comments or questions with regard to Article 41 or 42? I'm not hearing or seeing anyone. Are you? Okay. Then we will call the vote. This requires a majority, bundle 23, Article 41, 42. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it unanimously. We now go back to single vote items. The next item, Article 43, are land transfers for tax title purposes to general municipal purposes. It's a majority vote. Mr. DePaolo?
I move the printed motion under Article 43.
Second.
Finance committee?
Finance committee recommends by a unanimous eight to zero vote, passage of Article 43.
Mr. Mizikar?
Article 43 proposes to transfer 102 properties from tax title to the care, custody, and control of the town manager's office. The 102 properties, which are summarized in the town meeting book and detailed in the supplemental materials and included maps outside in the foyer, were taken over the past 100-plus years by the town for non-payment of taxes. The median number of years since these foreclosure proceedings is actually 55 years. Municipal properties are classified by their use designation, which is set in most occasions by town meeting. None of these properties has ever had a specific use designated by town meeting, they simply remained in the care, custody, and control of the tax collector. And therefore, they have sat fallow in many instances without any public or municipal benefit. This article secures a broad initial designation for these properties, protecting them from private interests, including court procedures like adverse possession. Upon the passage of this article, my office will conduct additional studies to determine the best and highest use of these parcels, which will likely bring many, and will likely bring many of them back for further designation by town meeting. In order for properties to be permanently preserved or used in any other way by the town, their specific use needs to be set. So this initial step is really just protecting them from outside interests, preserving the assets of the community, and we'll be back for further discussion if this is approved.
Thank you. Any comments or questions in reference to Article 43? Yes? Good afternoon.
Nancy Nelson, precinct 10. In one of the recordings that I saw before, you mentioned that these properties could be used for affordable housing. Is that, I didn't hear you, I might have missed it, but I didn't hear you mention that.
They could be, right? And that's the next step, to study what their best and highest use would be, and then come back to town meeting where appropriate.
Okay, so, follow-up?
Certainly.
So just to be clear, if there was going to be any sale of these properties, or even to just designate them as, you know, open space or whatever, that's something that will come before town meeting?
Yep, town meeting controls the ability to sell any piece of town land, and we're not seeking that approval through this article.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Thank you. Further comments or questions with reference to Article 43? Mr. Zikos?
Good afternoon, Paul Zikis, precinct one. Thank you for compiling the list and putting the lot sizes and all that good stuff together so we have a better understanding. There, as Mr. Mizikar states, there are a lot of these parcels that are, in essence, undersized. There are some, however, that might be a little misleading only because they're contiguous, so the contiguous total of those parcels is going to be, make a larger parcel, which might make it more valuable or more useful either to the town or for prospective sale. So a few questions. One is, you know, how are we going to balance this with the efforts of the new tax that we instituted for CPA and Mr. Molina's efforts to acquire land parcels, and then us to consider alternative uses for these land parcels? And you may not have the answer to that now, but I think that's something that, I don't know if you ultimately, after your office, reviews these, if there'll be kind of a team that gets together to figure out, okay, do we need anything for municipal purposes? There's some that are obviously going to probably be, I suspect, and I don't want to speak for anyone, but deeded to conservation because there are wetlands, and for instance, there is a parcel on Hill Street, and this is number five or six, a few people wanting to review in order, I'm going in numerical order. So number five and six are actually two parcels that are contiguous. They total six acres in a great demographic, great area, and that they do have frontage on Hill Street, and there does appear to be upland on those parcels. So that would be something that we as town meeting, I'm sure town meeting members would have an interest in, and we as the town, you should look at that, consider it a fairly potential, at least for a, for a good asset. Also, number 50, number 50 is 237-239 North Quinsigammon. This shows through the public records that it's a 2.26-acre parcel, waterfront parcel. It appears, I have to pull in the field card, on this particular parcel that it is part of the Donahue Rowing Center, and it is assessed at over $2 million because of that. So are you suggesting that maybe we built on this without knowing it was tax possession property and didn't have it properly transferred to the town from the tax title custodian?
So what I'm, so we've done extensive deed research on these properties, and there was some transfers of land in the area of 237 to 239 North Quinsigammon, so certainly not the full 2.26 acres needs to be, is uncertain, but there's a portion of land that was transferred to the town and a portion of land that was taken by the town, and there's no clear title as to whether the portion that was taken by the town was ever transferred. So this is more of a belts-and-suspenders, abundance-of-caution approach to ensure that it's designated as municipal purposes. But yes, we do recognize that's part of the DRC.
And the terminology of this, of this article is a little bit broad, and that's why I wanted to just review some of these parcels, because I think it could... to just review some of these parcels, because I think it gives insight to myself and others exactly what the town owns and what other prospective uses might be for that one. But shoring up the title would be a priority for us to maintain one of our finest assets over there. Also, number 51, 248 North Quinsigammon. This one, again, you know, sizable parcel, 4.84 acres. It is assessed at about $265,000. A portion of that does appear to be wet, but again, I would bring that to your attention as well. Number 71, 11.8 acres, this having frontage on Soul Street, frontage rather, on Soul Street. This is at the corner of Brentwood Drive. It kind of runs up Soul Street to where Floral Street intersects, and it runs behind houses on Seaton Drive. I suspect that one is probably wet. That might be a good, a good prospect for us to, you know, look at, look to speak with the Conservation Commission about that, or again, you know, I don't want to speak for you, Jason, but some of these might be good prospects for your committee as well to be able to put them into, you know, some beneficial long-term use for the, for the town or protective measures.
Paul, I'd like to give others a chance to speak too, so if you could wrap it up, please. I'll always bring you back.
Sure.
I want to make sure others have a chance.
So I'm going to go real quick, and I'm going to tell you the numbers 66, rather, 76, 77, 78, and 79. 5.7 acres of frontage with frontage on Old Grafton Street and Memorial Drive. That one could be something of particular interest. And then 269, South Quinsigammon, which is four parcels totaling 5.5 acres with frontage.
Further comments or questions with regard to Article 43? Mr. DiPaolo?
Over the past couple of years, we've been working on identifying the various parcels and confirming the deeds and how we acquired ownership of them. Started actually when the building committee for Beal was looking for property, and we found that one property was conservation land and we didn't realize it. But over the past few years, we've spent a lot of time going through every piece of town-owned property that we have, and identified how we own it, what, if there were any restrictions on it. We went through all of the tax title to make sure that we did go all the way to the final taking. And now we're at the point, and we found the deeds for some of the properties that we took by tax title. For some reason, we couldn't find the deeds, and we did find them in the registry. The point of this article is to protect these properties. That's all it is to do. The least protected property class is tax title. So we want to protect the properties. And the intent of this, as we move forward, if you vote for this, is to go forward and look at these parcels of land, similar to what Mr. Zikis said, and see if they should be playground, conservation, municipal purposes. Should we hold them for potential affordable housing? But the intent is not to sell this property. It's to save it. Now, there is an article coming up, and there's some slivers, and there's some issues with a couple of them about adverse possession that we need to rectify. But our intent is not to sell these properties. There may be some exceptions on little tiny slivers, but there's about 100 acres here. And we all know that we want to acquire more open space, and we want to protect what we have. So I just want to be clear, the intent of doing this isn't to get it and find marketable pieces of house lots and sell it. It's to save it.
Thank you. Further comments or questions with reference to Article 43? I'm not seeing or hearing any. This is requiring a majority vote. All those in favor of Article 43 shall signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Article 44 disposes of certain land in the community and requires a two-thirds vote. Mr. DiPaolo?
I'm sorry, that was another.
44.
That was another planet. I moved the printed motion under Article 44.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends by a unanimous eight to zero vote, passage of Article 44.
Mr. Mizikar.
So this article seeks to approve to transfer land that was taken through foreclosure for non-payment of taxes to the care, custody, and control of the Board of Selectmen for disposition. So different than the prior article, these are four particular parcels that we are seeking town meeting's approval to allow for the sale thereof. The details of each of these parcels are included in the town meeting book. Three of the parcels, 12 Cedar Road, 33 Eaton Avenue, and 25 Harvard Avenue would be transferred in their entirety. Only 99,000 square feet of approximately 115,000 square feet of North Quinsigammon Avenue will be transferred. 12 Cedar Road is a vacant lot of less than 1,200 square feet. The others, as detailed out, are also smaller than buildable lot size, which we permitted in those various zoning districts. So last summer and fall, town staff and my office began a comprehensive review of all properties with encroachments. That is, abutters in most cases have moved on sheds or various other things, driveways onto town land. During this process, 15 properties were identified with significant encroachments, and we have worked to remove those encroachments through all available means. The other three parcels in this article all have encroachments on them. After meetings with those responsible for the encroachments, reviewing legal options and other considerations, we feel that it is in the best interest of the town to work to dispose of these properties. The properties will be disposed of in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30B, Section 16, which governs the disposition of real property. In summary, any real property valued at more than $35,000 must be disposed of through a competitive process, meaning that the town cannot simply offer it to a private party without putting it out for a competitive bid or similar process. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any comments or question with reference to Article 44? Article 44, any first-time questions? I'm not seeing, oh, yes, I am. Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, Roberta, I didn't know it was you, but go ahead. You're not a first time. Let's have a microphone brought down.
Roberta Goldman, Precinct 8. I just have a point of understanding. Does you, usually, property transferred to the selectman? I thought, was there a particular, is this the usual way that property is transferred? Or is there a particular, or the town manager's, I just don't know where it usually goes.
Mr. Mizikar.
So when a property is being requested for sale, it normally is transferred to the Board of Selectmen, the executive body, to allow them to dispose of under the best terms possible and in accordance with the general laws and things like that.
That's unusual.
So, yes. So that, it ultimately means the Board of Selectmen would have to sign off on the purchase and sales agreement and all those things.
Thank you very much. Further comments or questions on Article 44? Mr. Malina?
Jason Malina, Precinct 1. So I have a concern about this article. Basically, the three out of the four properties where there is an encroachment. So as I understand it, the process is you're going to have a competitive bid, and you'll have three bidders, maybe, right? But you'll have the highest bid gets, wins it. But any, if we think about it, anybody who's going to be bidding on this property will also be subjecting themselves to the same adverse, adverse taking of that land anyway. So why would anybody other than the person who's already encroached in this property, bid on this property other than them? So by that means, wouldn't it be that these property owners could bid $1, and that's the highest bid? So what I, the way I look at it and say, okay, if that, if my logic is correct there, wouldn't we want to at least make sure that we're getting the best dollar from a minimum dollar amount, say, that sets value for these, for the slot size, right? To at least ensure that there's nothing less than, than the value of that property? Because, face it, again, I don't see why there'd be anybody else bidding on this thing for the three where the encroachments are on, right? And then also to that, you know, I don't want to be, I don't want to sign off on this and say, hey, you know, you've done something incorrectly, and we're just going to give you this property for free or for less, less the value. So I really have concern about those three out of the four. I think the fourth one, it makes sense, right? It's too much of, it's a sliver, and somebody, maybe there's a competition between the two property owners, but could you please help clarify that?
Thank you very much. Mr. Mizikar.
So I think I share the same feelings that you do, is I don't like being in this position where, you know, someone is encroached and may have an adverse possession claim against the town. But we've thoroughly vetted, you know, this to the greatest extent and verified that they likely do have that claim. So it's either fight them in court or attempt to monetize the property and work with them. In some instances, more than one abutter has encroached upon the town land. So there may be legal claims and other things for a potential purchaser of the property to have to deal with, but I think the town is putting in its best position to dispose of the land. Certainly, there's other, there's provisions within the general laws that require additional notifications if property is going to be sold for less than the assessed or appraised value of it. And the Board of Selectmen, you know, aren't going to sell off on, you know, or I wouldn't envision them signing off on the sale of a property for $1 if that's not the fair value, you know, for that transaction. So I understand your concerns and the challenges that someone other than the encroacher may encounter, but I think if we go through the competitive process, we're putting the town in the best decision to make that decision, or best position to make that decision, excuse me.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 44? Mr. Zikos?
Thank you, Paul Zikis, Precinct 1. Mr. Malina brings up some, some good points. In light of the encroachments on these properties, it's highly unlikely that anyone else would submit a bid because they may be buying litigation. So with a single bidder, or the high likelihood for a single bidder, his suggestion of a minimum bid amount would be, would be very appropriate in this instance to protect the best interests of the town. In other issues, in and of themselves, the parcels are not particularly large, but combined with the existing parcel of the contiguous landowner, they may present other opportunity to build or subdivide their lot. Is there going to be any deed restrictions on these properties?
Mr. Mizikar.
Yes, we, so we would envision deed restrictions to, and other provisions which require an abutter to combine with a pre-existing lot, not allow for subdivision of that lot and not allow for, you know, any development greater than, you know, the zoning would require. I know 12 Cedar has already allowed a two-family, and that one of the abutters operates, or has, excuse me, has a two-family, so, you know, that would be permitted.
Good. If we can merge them, that's, that's the best-case scenario.
Follow-up, Mr. Zikos?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And yeah, I'm not crazy about this either. It's like rewarding bad behavior, right? So that's, you know, people encroach, and then we sell them our asset for a nominal amount of money, but hopefully this will clean it up. I know you referenced properties with value over $35,000 and under 30, be the competitive bid process that needs to take place, but these will likely be under that amount and thus the reason for consideration of some type of protective measures. Thank you.
Thank you. A gentleman in the blue shirt, I think you had raised your hand.
This is Artifra from Precinct 10. So the four properties are encroaching, right? So my concern is, so how are we going to prevent in the future? Otherwise, the problem here is people can encroach and see the property, and then buy back later.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mizikar.
Yeah, great question, and that's exactly what we did on the prior article. So when municipalities do have protection from adverse possession, when their properties are properly designated, as Mr. DiPaolo mentioned, we're most exposed if it's only in tax title. So adverse possession claims are just like any private property claims at that point. But on the other end of the spectrum, if the town has designated a particular use, like conservation, playground, open space, then adverse possession is not an applicable, is not applicable in that situation. So it's important, what we did in the prior article, to prevent what happened to us that we're trying to remedy under this article.
Thank you. Further comments or questions with reference to Article 44? Not, do I see, no, adjusting his glasses. Not seeing or hearing anyone. We'll now call the vote on Article 44. This is a two-thirds vote. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Article 45.
Did motion, I move the printed motion under Article 45.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends by a unanimous eight to zero vote, passage of Article 45.
Mr. Mizikar.
This is in regards to the street acceptance of Lake Street and Commerce Road, I guess. Yes. So it used to be very common for town meeting to consider the acceptance of new roadways when subdivisions were going in a lot within the community. However, these are two roads that have been laid out and need town meeting's approval to make them public ways. The first on Lake Street is kind of a technical issue that we adjusted the layout of the roadway as we reconfigured it during the construction of the Beal School at 214 Lake. And then Commerce is a more traditional road acceptance where subdivision was put in, and the road was brought to appropriate standards in accordance with engineering and DPW requirements. And is, the town is now prepared to accept that and make it a public way. So town meeting must vote upon that to accept these two roadways.
This requires a majority vote. Any comments or questions with reference to Article 45? Not hearing or seeing anyone. We'll call this vote as a majority vote. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Article 46.
I move the printed motion under Article 46.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee unanimously thinks it's about time this was done.
Mr. Mizikar.
So Article 46 is two parts. The first would be to amend the general bylaws of the town of Shrewsbury to change the name of the Board of Selectmen to Select Board and all related references. And the second is to petition the General Court of the Commonwealth to make changes to Shrewsbury's special legislation, the Town Manager Act and Town Meeting Act, which has references to the Board of Selectmen, and change that to Select Board, of course, all to make it gender neutral.
Thank you, sir. Comments or questions with regard to Article 46? Not seeing or hearing anyone, and this requiring a majority vote. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. It passes unanimously. Article 47, Mr. DiPaolo.
I move the printed motion under Article 47.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee unanimously recommends by an eight to zero vote, passage of Article 47.
Mr. Mizikar.
Article 47 is a traditional article to, in accordance with the trust agreement, to appoint the trustees of the Wright and Harlow Trust.
Thank you, sir. Further comments or questions with reference to Article 47?
If it doesn't.
Not seeing or hearing anyone. I'll call the vote. This is a majority. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Looks unanimous. Okay, Article 48, we'll amend the intermunicipal agreement with, regarding the Westboro Treatment Plant. Mr. DiPaolo?
I move article, I move the printed motion under Article 48.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee unanimously recommends by an eight to zero vote, passage of Article 48.
Mr. Mizikar.
This article changes the entity that is authorized to enter into and amend intermunicipal agreement that was originally put in place with Westboro for sewer treatment plan in 1979. In 1979, the only way municipalities could partner through intermunicipal agreements was through their legislative bodies, the Board of Town Meeting. Now, in 2012, it changed, so municipalities enter through intermunicipal agreements through their executive bodies. In our case, the Board of Selectmen, so we're seeking to So we're seeking to have town meeting vote to transfer that authority from yourselves to the Board of Selectmen to execute all items associated with the sewer treatment plant in Westboro.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. Comments or questions regarding Article 48? I'm not hearing or seeing anyone, therefore, we'll call the vote. This is, is there somebody I missed?
No, sorry.
Okay, then. We will call a simple majority vote regarding Article 48. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion passes. We then have no other items to come before town meeting today, so we will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. We stand adjourned. We'll see you all in the fall. Thank you.